Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you all for attending to this afternoon for our council meeting workshop. We will have invocation. Before we have invocation, is Councilmember Solomon on Zoom? Let the record show that Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Sagara is not present. We have the invocation, and we will have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Boyd. Would you please stand with us? Please pray in your own faith. Most gracious Father, we thank you for your many blessings. Father God, we thank you for blessing our country, our state, and our city. We thank you for blessing our leadership, the city council, our city staff, and our residents. Father, we ask you to continue to watch over Fort Cabasos. We pray for Israel to be at peace and prosperity. As our men and women may be called to war to defend this great nation and others, we ask that you put your hedge of protection around them and their family members. Father, we thank you for all the partnerships we have throughout this state and out of state, God, that you continue to bless us and let us prosper as a city, as a council. Give us the wisdom and knowledge that is needed to guide and make decisions that will have a long-lasting effect for the positive for our city and our residents as we continue to grow. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Thank you all for coming, taking out your time to participate in today's meeting. I just want to say for anyone that is new here, all sidebar conversation, Mr. Calvin, Mr. Price, and anyone else with sidebar conversation that's being picked up on our video, we're going to have the common courtesy and respect for everyone that's here, and that includes the council too, and the council will respect you as a resident. As we take care of the business of the city, as you walked in, I hope you looked at the sign that's by the door to the quorum on how you should carry yourself. I shouldn't have to be the one to remind you nor a council member to remind you. And for anyone that's new while we were praying and doing the Pledge of Allegiance, if you have not signed up for a citizen comment, please do so at this time because our city secretary should not be distracted by anything while the council meeting is going on because we need her to make sure our notes and everything is accurate, and we need her to focus on the meeting, and that is what she get paid for, to assist us, and we are here to assist her. So anyone need to sign up that may have come in late and you are new and you do not know the rules of the quorum. All right.
Councilmember Solomon.
Let the record show that Councilmember Solomon is now on Zoom. Can you hear us, sir? Ms. Laura, the meeting is in progress. We can hear you. Councilmember Solomon, can you hear us? We can't, you're on Zoom, I mean, on mute. Chief, could y'all take that discussion in the hallway, please? Councilmember Solomon, take your phone off mute, please. We cannot hear him. You still muted. In order to be on Zoom, you have to be seen, and you have to be able to hear us, and we have to be able to hear you. So please work that out. With that being said, can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Just raise your hands, please. Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor, I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Boyd?
Second.
All in favor, yes; all opposed, no. Councilmember Solomon, is that a yes?
That's a yes.
So please raise—
Can you hit me now?
Yes, sir. Loud and clear, sir, loud and clear. So counsel, would you please raise your hands? Yes? It's not working. The motion carries six to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you read it, we will have the presentation.
PR 24024, Families in Crisis ARPA Funding Update. Thank you for having us here today. We are excited to come—
Yes, good afternoon.
—tell you about our progress on this funding. I'm Susanna Moore. This is William Hall. We're the executive directors here at Families in Crisis. Very quickly, our mission is to house, support, and empower people experiencing family violence, sexual violence, and homelessness. And here's a real brief outline of our services. These are very broad categories, and we have numerous programs underneath these. Every one of these programs provides supportive services and case management, but we operate two domestic and sexual violence shelters, a 65-bed facility here in Colleen and a 15-bed in Temple. We also have outreach services for survivors who do not need to receive shelter or they've already left the shelter. We provide housing assistance that comes from several different programs, and each of those programs has different eligibility requirements and provides varying amounts of services that can range from just deposit assistance to up to 24 months rental assistance. And finally, what we're here to talk about today is the Friends in Crisis Homeless Shelter Program, which is a 78-bed night facility here in Colleen. Just in the interest of transparency, we're going to discuss duplicated and unduplicated persons. Unduplicated persons are the total number of unique people who stayed in the shelter during a specific period of time. Persons who stay multiple nights are only counted once, whereas on our duplicated count, it's the total number of persons occupying beds in the shelter during a specific period of time. So that's where we come up with those shelter nights. These are the numbers for what we've served from January to August 30th. It was 488 duplicated persons, 1,175 unduplicated, 17,221 shelter nights. Of those duplicated persons, 410 were female and 765 were male. We had 60 children and 89 veterans.
In the homeless shelter.
In the homeless shelter, that is. That's just at Friends in Crisis. Now, since we received funding from the city of Colleen in March, in March, we did 2,271 shelter nights to 140 duplicated persons, or 60 unduplicated. In April, we did 2,027 to 80 unduplicated. In May, it was 2,418 to 74 unduplicated. June was 1,887, 60 unduplicated. July was 2,141, 69 persons. August was 2,048 to 58 people. So that was a total of 401 unduplicated, 977 duplicated, for a total of 12,792 shelter These are the invoices that we have sent to the city of Colleen. As you can see, they total $303,707.35. And I won't read off all those numbers, but it's about $50,000 a month. This is a breakdown of our reimbursements, so you can see where we spent that money. We spent $195,263.65 on salaries for the staff at the homeless shelter. We had $14,910.60 in payroll taxes and $16,725.99 in benefits for those staff members. And then we spent $76,869.17 on operations. So that's for the purchase of food and supplies and other required items. That's a total of $303,769.41. So out of that, $350,000 from the city, we have $46,230.59 remaining. This is a list of other funding we've requested. There are a couple of errors in the key at the bottom, but the important points are that in March, we did apply for TURF. We asked for $180,000, and we got $50,800. In April, we applied for the Emergency Solutions Grant through Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
That's them.
Yeah, I know.
There you go.
Okay.
Hit the backup.
Okay. From ESG, we received $289,628. Now, what is important to note about that is that only $163,702 is for shelter. The rest of it goes to homeless prevention, housing assistance, and rapid rehousing. So that's about $63,000 each in those categories. This will be what we use to fund the operations at the shelter through the end of February. We received, for the Community Development Block Grant, we received $25,000 for a case manager, and we reached out to Bell County for funding, and they said they're not accepting applications at this time. So we also have a VA contract that we estimate at $50,000. We're paid for that based on the number of contract beds the veterans use. So that's a total of $289,502.
Ma'am, before you go forward, this is how much you need to operate in now, the $289,502?
No, that's the money we have awarded.
Okay.
For next year.
For next year.
Thank you.
Go ahead. This is the last one, right?
No. Some important things to remember. Our average census per night was 61 people. We expect to serve 732 unduplicated persons this year. Our average bed nights per month is 2,153. We estimate that'll be about 25,836. That's a 17% increase from last year, and that's based on what we've done so far. Our average monthly cost is $50,618, and the estimated date the funds will run out is February 28th, 2025. And now we're ready to take any questions you have.
Thank you so much for your update. You have 89 veterans that are in your, that stay there. Is that on a regular basis?
No, that's total for the year so far.
So on a regular basis, how many do you have?
Would you say about—
Five.
Five, and they don't have to leave out, they stay there.
No.
So what you're requesting from VA is a contract to take in more veterans to just stay there inside?
Correct, but they have to meet certain criteria—
Correct.
—to even get on that contract.
Right, I understand that.
They have to be in the service so long, they can't have a discernible, they have to be seeking medical.
Yes, sir.
There's a whole bunch of restrictions to get on. We have some people that can't get on. We still take them as a regular homeless person.
Right, yes, sir.
So that was numbers, that 89 counts those, too.
Right, yes, sir. So I'm only concerned about, and you did tell us that, I'm only concerned about the contract. So in this contract, how many people are you requesting that that total would take care of with VA? Because you only have, what, nine now?
10 a day.
10 a day? Okay.
We currently have five on a contract. We upped it to 10 a day.
All right.
And it can go above that. The VA is very lenient if they have the beds. They split them between us and Temple. First fill is Temple because the VA hospital right there. We're a second fill, third one's Austin.
Right.
And that's how it goes.
Yes, sir. All right. Are there any more questions? Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
And the VA's got—
Sir, please ask your question.
My question is, on your salary, how many people does that pay for?
I want to say 14.
Okay. Thanks.
But I don't want to—
No, all full-time?
—don't hold me to that. I'm just—
Okay.
—counting real quick off my head.
Are these all full-time?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, no, one's a part-time.
Got it. Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
PR 24025, After-Action Review Report of August 7th Incident.
Mr. Resto, we have been waiting on this report, so come on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, sir.
So tonight, I'm going to review the critical steps. Let me back this one up one before we get here.
And I just want to make a note, if you see us looking down those same slides up there, we have them right in front of us, so that is what we're looking at. We're not ignoring you, we're just looking at the slides. All right.
But today, we reviewed the critical steps taken to remediate the recent ransomware attack that affected Colleen. Understanding these steps ensures that we better are better prepared for future incidents and enhancements in our responses. Just know, my primary role as the Executive Director of the Information Technology is to ensure the security of the city's IT systems, also to protect public interest, safeguarding critical municipal operations, and citizens' data. The way I look at it is that the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few or the one. That is how I approach my position. Now, I know KDH has spent an enormous amount of effort in spreading some information out there. They had a Nine News article, 14 open records requests, which has taken a lot of staff time to respond to a lot of theirs. I'm here tonight to set this straight and give the council, citizens, and employees a correct and truthful information as much as I can. Some information I cannot provide as it pertains to the security of the information and systems, but I will answer what I can. I do want to bring out the governmental code that I'm quoting, and what I can share and what I cannot share to the public. To the council, I can share in closed sessions very detailed information because I'm allowed to do that. To federal investigators, I'm allowed to do that, but I have to be careful of what I share because, again, we do not want to give the hackers any information thinking that it could hurt us in finding out, oh, well, this is their vulnerability, let's do that. So we don't want to do that. But the governmental code, Section 259.05, restricted information, confidential network security information may be released only to officials responsible for the network, law enforcement, and State Auditor's Office and agencies, or elected officials designated by the department. Network security information is confidential under this section of the information related to passwords, personal identification numbers, access codes, encryption, and other components of the security system of the government entity. Collected, assembled, maintained by or for a government entity to prevent and detect and investigate criminal activity. That is what I am bound and I must protect, the city's information. So it's not, I don't want to answer all the questions, some of it is I cannot answer all the questions. Others, it was also improper for me to give information out without having our forensic audit being completed, and I'm going to go through that timeline here in a few minutes. But I do want to answer one question. It comes up, why? So why did we, all investments that we've made as a city, why did this happen? And I can tell you that criminals, they adapt to new securities faster than we can keep up with them. Despite all the technological defenses that we have, human error remains a significant vulnerability. Employees may inadvertently click on a phishing attack, download malicious attachments, or use weak passwords, which can grant the attackers access to it. So while the technology investments are crucial, they must be paired with continuous monitoring, employee training, regular updates, comprehensive security practices, and reduce the likelihood of another ransomware attack. So that is the why. But some other facts. So 62% of the successful information ransomware attacks are via phishing. We know that. The average ransom payment is $812,360. The average recovery time is 24 days if the city or county has good remediation plans. So for perspective, the city of Colleen, we took 30 hours to recover. Now I'm going to go into our timeline. So item number one, on July 30th, 2024, at 16:04 hours, we observed suspicious activity from a user. Now, this information that I'm showing you was done by the forensic audit. So as they were in and as we were looking at their feet, their crumbs and their footprints, this is what was discovered. So this was the first indication that something was wrong. Step two, on July 30th, at 16:04, confirm attacker was using an elevated account from a virtual private network. In step three, the attacker started moving laterally between servers. And we have 52 of those, so they were moving from one to the other in there. Step four, August 7th, at 1300 hours, there was no more additional points of access, all unauthorized and authorized access, the VPN was blocked. The August 1 and 2, the attackers did nothing. They kind of just sat there, but there was evidence of staging of data, so they started to zip some files, 11 files that were identified, and I'll go into exactly what happened with those files. And August 6th, at 4:30 a.m., the virtual servers were encrypted. I was the first one on site, recognizing what was going on. We went to our incident handling plan and executed it till by 1 o'clock, everybody was shut out, so we can make sure we can do what we needed to do. So one server was encrypted at the OS level. We communicated with city staff, customers were alerted, Texas DIR was alerted, FBI was alerted, DPS was alerted. On August 8th, we sent out a local media alert, and then we began to rebuild and restore all systems, and that happened in 30 hours when we did that part. Now, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on this. On August 15th is when we engaged the outside vendor, so a lot of time transpend there. The outside vendor had 100 hours—
How you doing, Mr. Boyd?
Mr. Solomon, Mr. Solomon. Meet everything up there, please, me, right now.
So go in a little bit more detail. Black suit accessed the system on July 30th. They used a service account, using a VPN, and the service account is a username and password. The threat actor began encrypting files. And when we say encrypting, that means the servers that they deactivated. They actually did not encrypt any files in our file system because we shut it down too quick for them. There was evidence of staging of these 11 files. No evidence of data leaving the city after third-party review. We kind of knew that internally, but I couldn't say that until this third party validated that. So the files were there, they're still sitting there, actually, we've gotten rid of those now, but they weren't even encrypted, they were just a ZIP file because they could not encrypt that. Ransom request files were unfound on several servers, that's how we know what was going on. We activated the incident response, and then we did our mitigation efforts shortly after that. So give you some scope of what we have. Currently, we have 1,195 desktops, laptops, and 94 servers. No desktops or laptops were infected. This is one of the things that KDH tried to say, that I spent $168,000 on buying new equipment to replace these. We didn't replace a thing. We checked them, we verified that they were clean, but no system was encrypted except for our servers. 90% within one day, and currently, we're at 100% restoration. Some of the things we did proactively, we turned off Bell County because we have a trust relationship with Bell County, so we had to make sure that our partner was not going to get infected until we knew what was going on. Now, that took some posturing because we had to negotiate with them. I had to prove to them that our systems were clean before they connected back to us, and I do not blame them for that. Same thing with Central Square, which is our utility collections and finance. We disconnected that almost immediately internally because, again, we know we're going to protect the citizens' information. That company as well, Central Square, which is in Florida, also validated that, and I had to send documents to them to prove to them that our system was not infected. Once we got through all of that, which took about a week of going back and forth because they got to let their security teams ensure that everything is good on their end, and then my staff ensuring to them that we're good on our side. Those were that steps. Our prioritization, though, was focusing on customer-facing systems, so getting our systems for the customers up, again, for the customer trust and sensitive items, is our top priority. The financial data and operations, protecting the integrity and the confidentiality of our financial data, which is one of the things we did when we disconnected. And then safeguarding our operations to ensure ongoing business, so making sure everything was eradicated. We wanted to make sure that that was happening. So on August 7th, at 4:30 a.m., where I got called, I came in, and I started bringing in the team. From 4:30 a.m. to 1 p.m., we did the citywide incident internally, communicated the state and federal authorities with disabled, infected physical and virtual machines, and then we focused on stopping the attack and removal from all systems. So during that timeframe is what we were doing. On August 8th, we disconnected from Bell County and the customer-facing systems, and the last lone infection was— the last lone infection was removed, and then our full recovery began after that point. I do want to say council support, approval, funding for the backup systems and upgrade networks that I had been coming to you guys over the last few years is what saved us. So our backup system, with the help of Dell and other support partners that we use, was able to do the recovery. So two in the morning when we were able to do that, the recovery takes a little bit of time, but it was the backups that saved us. These backups enabled us to recover without paying the ransom. Quote, "We did not pay any ransom." Again, cut off security measures, we made sure, we shut off from Central Square, the financials, the utility collections, court, and Belle County to protect sensitive data from being compromised. What's our improvement opportunities here? Increase employee education. We already do monthly newsletters, we do the annual training, we do some, our own spamming to test, but we're going to do some more in that. We got to increase that a little bit. Implement multi-factor identification, that is in process now. We're working on setting that up, and what multi-factor authentication is, is something that you have and something that you know. So now, another step, so if somebody tries to connect into our system, now you're going to have to be prompted for a code and provide that code. So that'll help us immensely in our security posture. Again, we're periodic reviews outside organizations, PIN testing, coming in and checking the system. We are going to have to increase that checks from an outside, just to vet that what we're doing is correct. We do that already with current audits. We have the financial audit, I just did a network audit and a email audit this list last year. Those were far a part of our plan, to try to continue those audits. Additional zero trust, put in network, that's also in process. We're already engaged with vendors to start looking at hardening our network, look at our cybersecurity review, so we're looking at our plan that we have, and so that's in process now as well. We're trying to make sure that we, from our lessons learned, that we write down, that we document that, and then we have further steps. Doing some more privacy and security risk assessments, backup and recovery process, again, that's in process. We found some things that we needed to work on and shore up, so we're still doing that. I'll be coming to council probably in the next year as we replace some of the aging hardware that we have. That'd be one of the processes that we're going to keep going. And then commit to upgrade necessary software and applications. Some of the applications that we have, as you know, where we did the ERP, we're doing Fleet Faster, we're going to be doing UKG, we're doing for the HR side, those are all those legacy applications that we've been working on and we're going to continue to work on as we try to upgrade our systems, make sure that we're up to date on our applications because that would be a vulnerability. So we have a plan and we're working that plan. Some acknowledgements, the employees' commitment. I have to tell you, I call them the magnificent seven, but there were seven of us who stayed forty-eight hours, some, without leaving. And those guys are Nick, which is my assistant director, which is behind me, he was really the ringleader. He was eight days in from his hire, I just hired, he didn't have a full, he didn't have a paycheck yet, but yet he was one of the guys that stayed for the whole thirty hours. Raymond, one of our sysadmins, again, another guy, stayed thirty hours. Carter, another person, he stayed for the thirty hours. Nicole, one of our new sysadmins, she stayed till the bitter end. I had to send some of them home later because like, we're good, you two go home. Shane was our network manager. And then Carrie, who had only been here for thirty days, one of our other network techs. This team endured with me to get us back to where we're at, and they deserve the accolades for their commitment, especially being so new on the team. So an amazing thing. Other team members did other items that they had to do, but these are the crew that stayed through the bitter nights and all in, and thank God we have a pantry because that helped. I have human resources here because human resources called us out of the blue like Thursday, can't remember, those days run together, but they brought us some stuff. They brought us some stuff from Sonic, hey, guys, can you help? And you just don't know what that meant to our team. You're like, wow, that's great. Let's Eat Texas on Friday, by lunchtime, she actually walked over and brought us a bunch of chicken sandwiches and just like, wow. Again, for us, that means the same thing. City management team, well, they brought us cookies, they brought us ice cream, but they also supported us. I didn't have bombarded, I think, you know, they trusted us to get the job done. And that support, plus all the rest of the department heads, Willie, you need anything, I'll tell my people to leave you alone so we can get their stuff done. And then the outside vendors that we also use that for our support, and I will tell you, that's where those support dollars come in handy because those are the ones that's part of our support. But we're talking to a guy in Asia at three in the morning to restore a system, to help us restore a system, talking to Dell Technical Support to help us with a system, NetSync because we were missing something, and so, don't worry, I got it, I'll send it to you. And these guys are talking to us at one and two, three, four in the morning. So those were how part of our successes in this recovery. And that's the end of my presentation, and I'm here to answer any and all your questions as best that I can, given the restrictions. I do want to add one other thing, give you some perspective. This is the city of Richardson, who just got hacked Wednesday last week. City Richardson's still not up, just to give you a perspective. This is a list of all the cities that have been attacked in August and September. It's huge. So it's alive and well. We still have to do what we can to protect ourselves and defend ourselves, but part of it is, you know, what can we do to stop them from getting in? But the other side of it is, how do we restore if they do get in? What is our plan? And we got to make sure we work on our plan and make sure that we have the technology available to help us get there. I do have some questions here that was proposed from the Clean Day Herald that I would like to answer.
Thank you.
So, the Herald believes that clean residents deserve to know answers to lingering questions about August 7th cyber attack on the city. As you learn more about the cyber attacks at Tuesday night's meeting, we request the following questions be asked. Is the FBI investing to hack? And the answer is no. We communicated with the FBI in accordance with our disaster response, and the FBI has not communicated any need for investigation. And why is that? Because by time, we already had solved the problem. There was no need for them to intervene. We explained what we have done, our remediation, and they were satisfied with that. All they want from us right now is the report of what we did so they can inform other cities and agencies of how we survived or through it. The second question, how early did we know Black Suit have access to the system? We know by July 30th, that's when they accessed the system. They use a known city account, and that's how they exit. We figured that came in, I'll get to the other questions. What happened with the files Black Suit encrypted, or how do you get them back? Black Suit encrypted the servers, which were rebuilt as quickly as possible. No data files were encrypted. If the city did not pay ransom, what is going to happen to all those files that were encrypted? Again, no city, no data files were encrypted, all encrypted systems were purged. Did either the city or the insurance pay a ransom? The answer is no. We did this all in-house. What was the effect of the August 7th cyber attack on the city of Colleen? The city suffered a total network outage for about thirty-six hours. That was the effect. Were there any financial damages? Did the city of Colleen need to hire outside IT firm to do the recovery? And how much did that cost? The answer is no. All recovery was done and was completed in-house with the seven individuals that I just mentioned. What did the hackers get access to? What was encrypted? How much data was lost or unrecoverable? No data left. Access to our internal shared folders? No files were encrypted. We lost one day of operational data on the sixth, and that was it. How did the ransomware get past security? Was it phishing or something similar to that? And again, we cannot confirm the certainty of how the initial attack was compromised. We can only speculate that it was a result of phishing or brute force. I will tell you, from July 15th to about July 30th, the city was inundated with over one hundred attacks on phishing scams. Now, did someone click that? We had everybody reset passwords, but however, we can't, I can't say yes or no that that actually is how they got in. We do know that they had a valid username and they had a valid password, and you're going to be able to, as any other employee, we will be accessed to the system because there's no reason for us to suspect you. Multi-factor authentication, however, is going to make another step to make sure that is you. Are any city departments still affected by the hack? No, all systems have been sanitized and restored to full functionality. The only thing that I know of is that maybe credit card machines, that we have to buy new ones because the ones we have are old out at the transfer station. But the transfer station, I have to give my kudos to Jeff and his crew, they immediately went to their alternate method, and we still were able still to serve the clients that came through there. Did the city successfully stave off the cyber attack with no financials or other damages? If so, what were the lessons learned? And here's one of those where I really cannot tell you, so I can tell you some of the lessons learned, but I can tell you exactly what we did because it's one of those things. But the city was able to significantly reduce the fallout of the cyber attack by having a good backup solution. Skilled staff determined to keep the city infrastructure operational. Considering the increasing number of cyber attacks each year, we suspect cyber attacks will, was possible, and we know where our weaknesses are, and we have removed them. Again, strong backup solution, knowledgeable staff, disaster recovery plan, quick access to resources such as the spare servers and software that we have, limited the VPN access, which we are working on now. And that's pretty much answers all of KDH's questions that they filled it to me today. And now I'm available to answer any of your questions, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Resto. Mr. Francisco, Councilman Solomon, could you put his face to be big in case he have questions so he can be a part? Thank you and your team for all of your hard work. Just one more thing, when you say we didn't pay a ransom, that includes our insurance too, TML or anybody.
Correct. The only expense we had was thirty, thirty-four thousand dollars, a little over thirty-four thousand, that we paid for the forensic audit.
Will you repeat that again, Solomon?
Thirty-four thousand dollars for the forensic audit. That is our expense so far. We paid a little over two thousand dollars for some support that we needed for the transfer station to rebuild their software side. We did the hardware side, but there were some specific configurations that we did not have, so we had to do professional services for them to connect in to fix that. That's it. That's all we've spent.
And my last question, that we got a lot of questions for residents, why were they not notified as soon as it happened? And my answer was, your data was not encrypted?
That's correct. And the timing also, again, we, I was reluctant to, I was informing management, but I was reluctant to say that until I had this report from the forensics, and we just got that early last week. But then trying to schedule, to give you all time to get, and time to fit it in a council briefing and properly bring this to you, yes, it did go over a little bit longer than we wanted, but without that report, I wanted to give you definitive answers.
Yes, sir. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Madam. Mr. Resto, to you and your team, again, I say thank you very much for the hard work that you all put in. Early on, you said something, first of all, that we trusted you to get the job done, and I have to second that emotion because early on when I came on to council, one of the things that was very, very, very important to me was emergency management, cyber information security, and we had a conversation about that, especially when the cybersecurity infrastructure security agency easterly made the warning to the globe about the risk of cyber attacks around the world and how the impact we were going to see increase in this over time. And here we are now, over almost a year later, right? But you reassured me, and you said that if there was technologies that you needed, you were going to come to the council, and you did those things over that, over the course of those several years. And so, again, this is an end result, that you were able to turn it so quickly. This is one of the things that they're working with other cities on, how to bounce back quicker, right? And so that thirty-six hours or those hours that we dealt with is very miniscule compared to, like you just used your examples of the other cities that are suffering from these attacks. But so the public knows, and not to be, you don't want to stoke fear, but you have to be realistic about the situation, that this is not the end of it, right? There's going to be more. But your job and part of your team's job is to continue to practice that resiliency, right, to practice that preparation. And that's what you explained to us before about how you're going to prepare and continue to practice and run those scenarios so that we can be prepared in the future. So I want to say, first of all, again, thank you for hearing me out and not looking at me like I had two heads when I was asking all those questions, but thank you for protecting us and then providing us such a detailed report in the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. For clarification, there would be more cyber attacks, and that's throughout anybody, that's global. It's just not us, and she was just saying that they are prepared to deal with it when it happens. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Councilmember Board, then Councilmember Cobb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Resto.
Good evening.
And thank you for the thorough report on the incident that I believe was appropriately coined. I know that the council made a lot of investments in IT over the past three years. I believe there was some ARPA funding that might have went towards one of them, but they have proven to help protect us in situations like this. So I did want to say thank you. When I found out about the event or incident, I had resolved, knowing that your department was able to handle this and would handle it well and properly and professionally and effectively, as has been proven. So I did want to note that it is unfortunate that we did get some misinformation about this, but you were able to clear all of that up, so thank you. I did have a question for the mayor and to propose to the council. Considering there are some facts to this and that the entire council's not aware of, I wonder if it's probably appropriate if we do a quick closed session to get any questions asked that are deeper than this, if that's...
Yes, sir. The only reason I didn't go in closed session because Councilmember Sagaro's not here, and I believe something of this significance. If he's going to go in more details, the most important thing for us was getting it out to the public. Answering all those unanswered questions and try to control the narrative of the information that was being spewed out. But as far as going in detail, it's up to the council, but I prefer that Councilman Solomon be here, which that's challenges when we go behind closed doors on zone, so we already talked about that. And Councilmember Sagaro, which is a part of our team. So it's up to you if y'all want to go behind closed door. We do have National Night Out, we do have people that are visiting that would like to speak, and there will be a lot of questions.
All right. Understood. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think National Night Out might be next Tuesday.
It's tonight.
It's tonight.
It's tonight.
It is tonight.
Forgive me, I'm wrong.
That's why Councilmember Solomon's not here because he's hosting one of his...
So with that said, we'll go ahead and do that another time. I thought it was timely considering we all just received the information. Thank you, Mr. Resto.
Councilmember Cobb.
And Councilmember Board, I am prepared to do that when, at your leisure. I have the presentation already ready. I've already presented to the management team, so you'll get the exact same information with very detail. It'd be about a thirty to forty-five minute discussion.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you, you and your team. It's an old singing, I'm glad I'm married to the team I'm married to. So thank you all, you all did an excellent job. But my one question that I have, is there something that's a councilperson that I need to do, that I need to remember? Will you give that to us in a private session? Or I'm asking for something that, is there anything?
I think your support in the things that we bring to you all for when we do, understand that I'm not buying things just to buy them, I'm buying them, all part of our plan. Your support is very important to us as an internal services department. Sometimes we are the guys that are forgotten until it happens, but your support is really more important to me when we come up here. And obviously, I'll be prepared to explain every expenditure that I bring to you. There is a reason why we are buying what we buy.
And my next question is, the way that we use our laptops and when we have them, is there something significant that we should do, cutting them off, or?
There will be... There will be...
Not answering certain things?
When we start doing the multi-factor authentication, that's the part of it that I think is going to help us. So it'd be something that you do, something that you know. So we're going to know that that laptop or you're accessing a city account is going to prompt you. We're going to know also that if you're using a laptop that you're not in new, if you're supposed to be in the Clean Bell County area, that if you're in New York, that just kind of, we're going to stop it. We're going to check it at that point and say, well, wait a minute. And then you're going to call us and say, hey, I'm in New York. Okay, so that is you. And we'll let you in.
Thank you.
Mr. Resto, just to clarify, there was the one question about when we found out about the intrusion as opposed to when it actually happened. I think there was some confusion.
When we found out was August seventh at four thirty a.m. We actually found out because somebody out at the airport, I believe, couldn't clock in. So that was a flag for me. I jumped on my PC at home saying, what's going on? And then that's when I enacted our incident response plan at that time.
So it was, I don't have the math in my head, but it was less than twenty-four hours or just a little over when we went public with it?
Yes.
Yeah.
August eighth.
Yeah. The main thing is you don't run out saying the sky is falling when you don't know really what's going on. So we waited until we knew what was going on. And I think some of these things in the private industry, we don't find out for a year later that someone's been hacked and your personal information was stolen. So I think around twenty-four hours is pretty good. Thank you.
Once again, Mr. Resto, thank you and your team. I said it once, I say it again. You have brought this city from the cage stage in age up to the twenty, 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 twenty-one century with new technology. And you constantly proven and doing your best and your team to ensure that our cyber is safe. So thank you for everything you do. Councilmember Solomon, do you have anything? Do you have any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you for holding off on that. I do have questions and when we get to meet in executive session. But I would love to be there. But I would like, because I want to make comments as well. But I want to hold that until, until we have a chance to do an executive session on it.
Thank you. Would you please go back to mute your phone? Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
Work session, discuss agenda items three through twenty-one for the October first, two thousand and twenty-four regular session. MN two four zero two four, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of September third, two thousand and twenty-four. RS two four one seven eight, consider a memorandum resolution appointing members to vacant and unexpired terms on various boards, commissions, and committees.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. This is a little bit of a recap from September seventeenth. So I won't belabor the point, but council, the mayor and city council make annual appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees each year. And throughout the year as vacancies occur, the following table show members with expiring terms or resignations and whether the member is term limited or has requested reappointment. We first have the Animal Advisory Committee. The subcommittee member is Councilmember Adams. Councilmember Adams, do you have members to appoint?
I do. Brandy Maxey, Monique Brand, and Janie Waller. And can you, have you received the vet's application yet?
No, sir. I have not received any additional applications. Ms. Brand's application was received yesterday for reappointment. So that information has been updated on this slide. Okay. Next, we have the Arts Commission, which is all of council. The people in front of you, you indicated on your meeting September seventeenth. And Ms. Brand has reapplied since then, as of yesterday. But I don't know if you want to make any changes.
One of the things, thank you. One of the things that we say that they already serving on the committee, then we go with somebody new. And if there's other applications that a person have never served on the committee, you should give other people the opportunity. So what is your recommendation to fill Mrs. Brand at large position, council? Anyone have a name? A new person that have not served?
Mr. Richard White is in that slot right now as from the seventeenth. So that is up to council.
Okay. Is that who you want? Okay, you said Richard White. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the Audit Committee, which is all of council. Mr. Ralston has requested to be reappointed. Mr. Blair did not request reappointment. And Mr. Ralston did reapply.
Okay, Mr. Ralston. And Councilmember Boyd, you have another person?
Yes, Madam Mayor, and I'm glad we opened, left this period open for others to apply who have never served before. I would like to nominate Mr. Tyrone McLaurin to serve on the Audit Committee alongside Mr. Jack Ralston.
Received. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd.
Next, we have the Board of Adjustment Aviation. The subcommittee is Councilmember Cobb and Mayor Nash King. Four of these individuals requested reappointment. Mr. Hager T. did not. What is your pleasure?
Councilwoman Cobb, did you have a person?
We do not have a person. There were no applications that came in. So we can leave it at four.
Yes, ma'am. You want to reappoint the four that did reapply? Yes, ma'am.
But if we do have anybody because we do not have application, you just want to keep it at four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, that's...
Your pleasure.
Yes, ma'am. Moving on to the Board of Adjustment Construction Subcommittee, Councilmember Alvarez and Councilmember Boyd. The new members are listed there from the meeting on the seventeenth. Roye Spoils reapplied for reappointment since the seventeenth, which was notated in the meeting packet. However, city council indicated previously they would like to appoint Chetty Emile to fill the electrical contractor position on the board. Does that stand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next, we have the Board of Adjustment Fire Prevention Code Subcommittee, Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Boyd. Mr. Blackman asked to be reappointed to this committee. And since the seventeenth, Mr. David Laws has applied for appointment to the Board of Adjustment. And I spoke with Councilmember Solomon regarding this matter and he recommended the appointment of Mr. Laws to the board.
And he's new, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
He's a new appointee.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have the Board of Adjustment Zoning. In front of you, you can see the individuals indicated on September seventeenth.
Correct.
Okay. Next, the Civil Service Commission with one appointment, Mr. Kegel made. Now we have the Community Development Advisory Committee. Mr. Cedric Moss was identified on the seventeenth. So additional selections need to be made. The rest of the individuals listed have requested reappointment.
Do we have new applications in?
Do, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can...
Is this what the council recommended on seventeen?
They just appointed Mr. Cedric Moss or recommended Mr. Moss. So Noah, I mean, if you want to reappoint the other individuals, that's fine.
No, ma'am, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay. Next, we have the Heritage Preservation Board. Cindy Rowe was identified as being the planning and zoning rep.
Would you hold one? Those on the seventeenth, the council had already selected who they wanted on that. And I didn't know that until Councilmember Alvarez told me. So if the council majority already voted on that, it's done deal. I mean, I can't go back and challenge that. Continue.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, there wasn't a vote taken. It was a discussion. But this is the vote this evening or this afternoon.
It was a consensus that that's...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have the Clean Economic Development Corporation. Again, these individuals were identified by KEDC to fill these vacancies. Then we have the Clean Sister Cities with the new members listed as identified on the seventeenth. Then we have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, all of council. Delsina West reapplied for the Parks and Rec Board since the seventeenth meeting, which was notated in the meeting packet. And at-large selection needs to be made for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Anybody new? That have not served? Council, no one have anybody?
Mr. Alvarez.
Well, he didn't collect. That's why I don't see it. Councilmember Alvarez.
I had Tramon Cannon.
Counsel, are you okay with that? Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have the Planning and Zoning Commission next with the new members listed.
That is correct.
Then we have the Senior Citizens Advisory Board with the new members.
That is correct. Councilwoman Cobb and Councilmember Solomon, is that correct? That's who y'all selected?
Yes.
Okay.
That is, that's who we selected on the seventeenth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two Board, those are the individuals selected by those entities, including the city of Ms. Toni Rinkold. And last but not least, we have the Youth Advisory Commission, the subcommittee, Councilmember Alvarez, Councilmember Sagara, and Councilmember Adams, who did interviews with these individuals.
That is...
And there's still a vacancy available.
For a new member?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Alvarez, do y'all have anybody else?
No, ma'am, I do not.
I don't believe anyone else has applied.
Yes.
So. And then the recommendation is to appoint these individuals to the vacancies for the next fiscal year.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you and your team for doing such a great job. Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
Councilmember, anybody want to speak? Councilmember, who name was up there? Oh, okay. Madam Secretary, thank you.
RS two four one seven nine, consider a memorandum resolution nominating candidates for the Board of Directors of the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County for two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you. Attorney Clemmons.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is your Tax Appraisal District Board of Directors item. As background, in two thousand and twenty-three, the taxes property code, property tax code replaced previous process for appointing the Board of Directors for the Tax Appraisal District. Previously, the city of Clean appointed one member to the Tax Appraisal Board. And on January first, two thousand and twenty-five coming up, the Tax Appraisal Board will be made up of the elected tax assessor-collector, three members elected by voters, they've been elected already, and then five members who are appointed by the taxing entity election. And how the taxing entity election will work is that all taxing entities will nominate up to five candidates before October fifteenth. The appraisal district will then send a ballot to taxing entities. It includes all the nominations and the entities will then have a certain number of votes based on the percentage of the total tax levy to put towards whichever candidate or candidates they choose. And the cities will have five hundred fifty-two of the five thousand total votes. Final votes will be submitted no later than December fifteenth, but we'll be bringing that item back to you in November. And staff recommends the city council nominate up to five candidates for the Tax Appraisal District of Bell County Board of Directors for two thousand and twenty-five. So what we need tonight is the name or names of the nominations to send to the appraisal district to be included on the ballot.
Counsel, have y'all decided on a name or names? If not, we, do we have to make a decision tonight?
We have to get those nominations in by October fifteenth. And this is the last, the last council meeting we have before then.
So do y'all have one? Also, at this time, we're just going to table it. I know, I know we got to meet, but right now they don't, haven't decided who wanted this person. So right now, we'll just move on. We'll come back to that before we vote. Okay. Madam Secretary.
RS two four one eight zero, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the award of bid number two five zero one, water and sewer materials to multiple vendors in the combined amount of nine hundred fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. The Water and Sewery, Water and Sewer Department utilizes various materials to operate and maintain the water distribution and sewer collection systems. Hundred and thirty-two material items are procured through a bid process on an annual basis. And bidders are selected by individual material line items based on the low bid for that item and the vendor's ability to meet the bid requirements. On July thirtieth of this year, eight bids were received for bid number two five oh one for the water and sewer materials at, for estimated quantities for a twelve-month period. Seven vendors of the eight were selected for these hundred and thirty-two different items, and those are listed here. Staff recommends that city council authorize the award of bid number two five dash zero one for the water and sewer materials to the selected vendors and authorize the city manager or designate to execute contracts with the selected vendors in an amount not to exceed nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Okay.
RS two four one eight one, consider a memorandum resolution rejecting all bids received for bid number two four forty-five, storage tank mixers.
Thank you. Storage tank mixers are used to assist in stabilizing water quality, reducing the risk of stratification within the tanks by continually circulating the fresh water with water remaining in the tank. On August the fourteenth, purchasing received two responses for bid number twenty four forty-five for, for tank mixers for four tanks. That's a lot of fours. There were two, two bids came in, one from Pax Water Technologies and the other from Hydra LLC. This is a picture kind of showing what they are. And basically, they're just a mixer to keep the water moving around and mixed up. So again, that you don't get stratification and you can have reduction of water quality if that happens. There was the review of the two responses showed that the specifications in the bid packet were too broad to compare them equally. So basically, they weren't specific enough to be able to compare the two different bids. It wasn't apples and apples. The general instructions and preparation of the bid conditions within the bid documents allow the city to reject any and all bids. So again, because it wasn't apples and apples, the recommendation then is that the city council would reject all the responses, the two responses, to bid number two four forty-five for the storage tank mixers and that the city go out to bid at a later date with more detailed specifications. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
There are no questions. Thank you. Madam Secretary, Madam City Attorney, for RS dash twenty-four dash one seven nine, that your item that I said we'll come back to, the only person that reached out to me was Mr. Kenny Wales. And the reason I didn't bring up his name is because he serves on the water board. So I didn't know if that was a conflict. But counsel, that is the only person that reached out to me about serving on there. If you don't have one, a person, and if it's not a conflict. And that's the only person that I've heard from is Kenny Wales. But he do serve on the water board. And my question would be, since we do have to have somebody tonight and I look to my left and right and council do not have anybody, that is the only person that have contacted me about if you don't have anybody, I would be willing to serve. And is that a conflict by him serving on the water board?
The dual service conflict laws are pretty fact-intensive and I haven't done that research, so I don't know...
research, so I don't know that I can give you that answer right now. I would need to do research, but if you wanted to make that nomination, we could.
Yes, ma'am. If that's okay with the counsel. Is counsel okay with that? Well, that would be the nomination. And if it is a conflict, we will have to find some kind of way, and tell me if I can do this, or do the counsel have to? I know we have a deadline. Can the counsel give me authority to find another person if Mr. Wales is the conflict of interest, or do we have to do it collectively?
You have to do it collectively because it has to be done by resolution.
Okay. All right, so we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Thank you. Madam Secretary, next item. Oh, wait a minute, before we go to the next item, Chief, I'm sorry, we have guests here, and I wanted to see, before we get into Chief Lopez and Chief Kabinsky, if we could pull RS dash twenty-four dash one zero, the Texas State Veterans Cemetery, can we let Ms. Wilson go next, because they will have to leave? Is that okay, counsel? All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. We're going to go to item number RS dash twenty-four dash one nine zero, and our Assistant City Manager, Mrs. Wilson, will take that. Thank you, counsel.
Good evening, counsel. As you know, we proudly contract with the, there have an interlocal agreement with the Central Texas State Veterans Cemetery, and I have two gentlemen here with me this evening, and they're available for questions when I get through the presentation, so I'll start that and run through it quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
So the Texas Government Code, Chapter seven ninety-one, authorizes local government to contract for governmental functions. In twenty twenty-three, the City Council approved an interlocal agreement with the General Land Office and Veterans Land Board to assume responsibility of cemetery management by absorbing the current employees of the cemetery into City of Colleen employment. The Veterans Land Board does retain ownership and responsibility for all veteran cemetery assets, including buildings, real property, capital expenditures, and equipment and assets whose cost is borne by the Veterans Land Board. The agreement states that the General Land Office does pay for all of the City of Colleen's direct and indirect cost, and the General Land Office remains responsible for all capital repairs over a thousand dollars. The City of Colleen, as part of the contract, is required to maintain the cemetery to national standards. There are a handful of amendments that were included in our contract renewal, including updated cemetery inspections checklist, which was provided by the Veterans Land Board. There was also an updated providers budget reflecting a twelve-month period. As you recall, we started this contract in the middle of the year last year, in February, and so this will reflect a full twelve-month period going forward. And that's also reflected in the management and operations fee in the exhibit attached to the contract. The contract has been revised to term with one-year options, with an additional option to renew for up to three one-year periods. And there were a couple of typos that we corrected as well. So the recommendation is for City Council to authorize the city manager or his designee to execute an amended interlocal agreement with the General Land Office and Veterans Land Board, for the City of Colleen to continue assuming responsibility for cemetery management and operation services for the Texas State Veterans Cemetery in Colleen, Texas. And with that, I will introduce Dr. John Kelly.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Counsel, do y'all have any questions? So, Dr. Kelly, we thank you and Sergeant Major Gault for our partnership and relationship. Everything is going well, and we look forward to working with you all again in the future. Thank you. Oh, please.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Staff, and residents of Colleen, I bring you greetings from Austin. My name is Dr. John Kelly. I'm the Director of the Texas State Veterans Cemetery Program, and with me today is Command Sergeant Major Retired Doug Galt, the onsite representative at the cemetery in Colleen. I rise to speak in support of RS twenty-four dash one ninety, and to provide you a short report of the contract period that we just completed. In November twenty twenty-three, the cemetery was inspected by the National Cemetery Administration and received an Operational Excellence Award, which was the highest award that could be provided by the National Cemetery Administration. Although this award was presented before the contract period started in February, I did want to mention it because it's an indicator of the very high caliber and quality of those employees at the cemetery. When we presented their options associated with the transition to the city contract, I'm happy to report to you that one hundred percent of those employees chose to go with the city. I feel very confident that the high standards have been maintained and that staff morale is high. The employees enjoy significant benefits that were unattainable under their previous arrangement. If you visited the cemetery yourself, you can easily see how hard they worked to keep the cemetery beautiful and a place of reverence and respect. Just today, we received the fiscal year twenty-four customer satisfaction scores for all of our cemeteries. You didn't hear about this, because the last time we did it was about this time last year, prior to execution of the contract. Program-wide, last year, we scored an amazing ninety-nine point oh three percent customer satisfaction, and that's an incredible number. Ladies and gentlemen, we just beat it. We just went up to ninety-nine point one one percent customer satisfaction rating, and so it increased with the addition of the Colleen Cemetery into the contract. During Memorial Day twenty twenty-four, back in May, for the first time, a sitting governor of the state of Texas attended a Memorial Day ceremony at the cemetery in Colleen. In addition, Land Commissioner and Chairwoman of the Veterans Land Board, Dr. Don Buckingham, also attended that same ceremony and spoke. And it's my belief that both of them chose to do so because of the incredible work done by the staff as part of the contract with the city. We've been moving forward with equipment modernization, and we're happy to report that we'll soon be initiating a major twelve-point-seven million dollar expansion at the cemetery to provide enhanced services to our veterans and their families for many years to come. In short, the contract with the city has been highly successful, and the Veterans Land Board wishes to continue the relationship as we serve our veterans and their families. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Just real quick, I just want to recognize the achievements that you guys are accomplishing out there, and thank you to retired Command Sergeant Major Gault for the work you're doing. Last time we spoke about this subject, we were discussing the City of Colleen assuming responsibility, or you guys coming on with the City of Colleen for operations, and the report essentially said a hundred percent of the existing employees were retained. I think that's worth noting, they're enjoying the benefits, we knew that was an issue. You guys are ongoing with the awards you last presented, and we shared that with us. Customer satisfaction remains high since that moment, and you guys are working towards a twelve million dollar expansion. So we're heading in the right direction, and this is a great report. Thank you.
Dr. Kelly and Sergeant Major Retired Gault, I thank you all for your partnership, but most important, we thank Team Colleen and the staff, the ones that the Councilmember Board have come on board. And counsel, on behalf of the City of Colleen, I went out, Sergeant Major Gault invited me, I think Assistant City Manager Wilson went with me, and we both presented awards, and Sergeant Major Gault, you can talk on that if you would like, presented awards to all the employees on behalf of the City of Colleen and counsel for all of their extraordinary work, once we found out they had received an award. They received coins, too, because they had become a part of Team Colleen. And this counsel right here stand behind our employees and also the veterans that work at the Veterans Cemetery and their leadership. So we are all a part of Team Colleen. Thank you both. Madam Secretary. Thank you, sir.
RS twenty-four one eight two, consider a memorandum resolution entering into a contract with Axon Enterprise, Inc., for police technology upgrades in the amount of thirteen million seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Before Chief Lopez speak on that topic, Assistant City Manager Wilson, thank you. You just came on board, and you're doing extraordinary and amazing things, and now it's following up under your leadership and your communication with them, and working with the staff out there has only proven more dividends than we can imagine in the future because of the relationship you have set up. Thank you. All right, Chief, the floor is yours. And Chief Lopez have counsel the next, you only have one item? Okay, great, that's Chief Kabinsky. Whoa.
That's the other guy.
Wow. All right, Chief Lopez.
Good evening, good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor of Tampa, City Council. Today, we're to discuss the KPD proposal to transition to Axon, a leading provider of connected public safety technologies. In the field of law enforcement, the need for advanced technology to enhance public safety, department efficiency, and community trust has never been greater. As part of our commitment to maintaining the highest standards of service and accountability, KPD wants to take advantage of and integrate Axon's cutting-edge technology and implement them into our daily operations. Axon's comprehensive suite of tools includes body-won cameras, digital evidence management systems, and real-time data analytics. Oh, I'm still on the first line. Okay, I'll go with that, okay. These innovations are designed to improve the effectiveness and transparency of KPD and foster stronger relationships with the community we serve. Throughout this presentation, we will explore the various components of Axon's technology, how they will be implemented, and the anticipated benefits for the department and the public. We will also address any questions and concerns we get regarding this transition. Here on Zoom, we have Mr. Danny Taylor from Axon to answer any technical questions you may have. The Colleen Police Department is dedicated to strengthening law enforcement capabilities by leveraging advanced technologies that align with our operational requirements and strategic objectives. As Colleen experiences rapid urban growth and evolving community needs, our commitment to ensuring the safety of our residents remains steadfast. Adapting, adopting innovative tools like body-won cameras, taser devices, and digital evidence management systems is crucial to accomplishing our mission effectively. This slide illustrates some of the gaps and limitations we currently have in KPD. I will provide, I will provide example in each bullet point. On the integration challenges, I have three points. The first point is complexity. Our current technology systems do not integrate well with each other, creating data silos. My second point is interoperability. Employees have to access several different systems to do their jobs. My third point on the, on the integration challenges is IT support. The IT department spends a lot of time in our building maintaining our technology to ensure our systems are working correctly. The next bullet is training requirements. Due to our various systems, training employees to use technology effectively isn't easy. The next bullet is cost considerations. Our current system incur a lot of substantial maintenance costs in labor and materials for maintaining and updating old technology. Under the data management bullet, we have several issues. As you could imagine, KPD produces tremendous amounts of data. Additionally, we are concerned with data qualities to ensure our data is accurate, consistent, and reliable. And data storage issues are my biggest concern due to the number of videos we have to maintain for an indefinite amount of time due to convictions and the appeal process. The next bullet is very important, and it's citizens' concerns, and that is privacy and ethical behavior. As the city government and police department, we must safeguard sensitive information against breaches and unauthorized access. Additionally, proper audit procedures ensure that the technology is used ethically and respects civil liberties. Under the delayed response, there are several issues. Number one is that communication lags can hinder response times. Delays in information gathering can impact decision-making and operational efficiency. If we can't receive accurate information during dispatch or when the employee is en route to the scene, we can improve response times and secure the correct resources to handle the scene or the incident. And the most serious issue is our limited situational awareness. In law enforcement, the lack of real-time data and insights can affect situational awareness during incidents. Also, incomplete or outdated information can lead to poor decision-makings by employees and supervisors. On the insufficient evidence and collection and storage point, bullet point, we have to ensure three things. First of all, data integrity is a priority for legal reasons. We must ensure that the collected evidence remains untampered and authentic. My second point is that we need to create a cloud-based storage solution for digital evidence to reduce the time it takes to handle it and reduce IT labor hours. And lastly, we need efficient systems for retrieving and managing evidence. My last point on this slide is difficulty in crime analysis and prevention. We currently lack advanced analytical tools to predict and prevent crimes effectively. We face challenges correlating data from multiple sources to identify crime patterns. Now, this slide illustrates the benefits of switching to Axon. Let's first discuss the streamlined evidence processing point. Axon technology will reduce employees' time in processing evidence, which allows them to focus on other critical tasks. Faster evidence processing leads to quicker case resolutions, which enhances overall efficiency. Under the, under the enhanced data management, Axon offers improved data management capabilities, ensuring secure storage, and easy access to crucial evidence. Under the efficient tax automation, is, that alone is a great reason to switch to Axon, because it reduces the manual workload, allowing employees to focus on higher priority tasks. We will greatly enhance our real-time crime center capabilities when it's built in December. By switching to Axon, since all of our systems will be integrated into one ecosystem, we gain the ability to use real-time data analysts and threat identification, and it improves our situational awareness and enables employees to make more informed decisions based on up-to-date information. Under Axon Auto Transcribe, that's a big time saver for employees. Axon automatically transcribes body camera footage, which saves employees a lot of time in report writing. It ensures accurate transcription of footage, which can be crucial for case documentation. Axon Evidence is a centralized digital evidence management system that reduces the time employees spend handling digital evidence, and I'd like to give an example of that. Currently, when we have a two-hour video, it takes us two, three, four hours to go through it, redact it, and then process it and give it on to the DA's office, whoever needs it for further investigation. Under this system, we could do that in minutes. So it's going to be a great tool. Axon Respond is an employee safety component that allows real-time situational awareness and remote access to live feed to an employee at the scene. So say, for example, a citizen calls nine-one-one, we could, under the real-time crime center and Axon, the citizen, the officer could call the citizen on the way to the scene, FaceTime the citizen, and get real-time information while en route to the scene. That's a big game changer. And lastly, community engagement. Axon strengthens community relations through transparent practices. Axon My Nineties, an engagement tool designed to bridge the gap between law enforcement agencies and the communities they serve. It works by collecting feedback through confidential surveys. Now, this is the proposed technology slide. Engaging in a long-term contract with Axon can offer several benefits. Here are some potential advantages. First of all, it is a strategic investment. Axon offers a comprehensive package, and the investment covers hardware, software, accessory, training, support, equipment replacement, and warranties. Most importantly, it ensures that KPD will have a complete law enforcement solution for the next eight years. Axon's bundle solution enhances KPD's operational efficiency. Opting for the bundle solution is like most internet services that we all know, if you bundle, the more you bundle, the more you save money. So by opting for the bundle solution, the City of Colleen saves possibly three-point-one million dollars over the next eight years. Lastly, long-term contracts come in with locked-in pricing and price sensibility clauses. This can protect the organization from fluctuations in market prices or inflation, provided budget predictability over the contract duration. Now, let's talk about the refresh schedule. As you can see, Axon body cameras, part of the contract, they will come out and replace our cameras after thirty, sixteen, eighty-four months, our docking stations, thirty, sixteen, eighty-four months, and even our virtual reality headsets every five years. With Axon, we can cut that down to six hours per month, excuse me, I'm sorry, wrong slide. The funding right now is in our budget for twenty twenty-five. For the first year, it'd be one point seven million dollars, and for years two to eight, it'll be a little less than, like, eight thousand dollars less. For the eight-year total, it's thirteen million seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And our recommendation is to authorize the city manager or his designated representative to execute a contract with Axon not to exceed thirteen million seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the acquisition of body-won cameras, tasers, virtual reality training equipment, interview rooms, and car camera systems. systems, including the cradle points, AxonEvidence.com, Axon Air, Axon Standards, Axon Respond, Axon Records, and Fusion Software for the Real-Time Crime Center for the Colleen Police Department. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Chief, thank you for the updates. I only have one question that I'm concerned about, a safety concern, the FaceTime while driving.
Mm-hmm. But we expect the officer, we want, we're going to have policies in place when they FaceTime a, a citizen to stop, pull over inside a row, complete the call, and then proceed to the next call. And we also could do that through a real-time crime center. For say, for example, the sergeant is going to be assigned to real-time crime center. He could do the same thing, and he's stationary, so he could relay the information to the officer over the radio. So there are two ways we could accomplish that as safely as possible.
Right, but the officer is en route to a scene.
Correct.
And they FaceTime the person.
No, the officer, if the officer does it from his car, from his cell phone in his car, he's going to have to pull over and make the call. But also, the real-time crime center sergeant supervisor who's on there 24 hours a day, he could do the same thing and relay the information to the officer. So we have two options to do that as safely as possible.
Counselor member Adams.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Chief, does this, will this automatic request connect, or we would have to do, an exception to connect to the crime records, the FBI system, NC, forgot the acronym. NCIC, thank you.
There's, there's separate standalone systems. There's no connection to, to, to those systems.
Okay.
Those are separate systems.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I do believe this technology is important, but are there, would there be any potential additional costs for system upgrades?
No, ma'am. The eight-year contract covers all upgrades, warranties, repairs, replacements. That's part of the contract.
Okay, and then would there, is there a component or requirement for updated report-writing software?
Well.
That is included in that as well?
Yes, ma'am. There's, there's a component of this software. It's called AI narrative.
That is the, okay.
And that's part of the contract.
Thank you. And then the transition process. What's the timeframe, or what does that look like? Because I understand sometimes it's a little tricky, obviously, when you're transitioning into something like this.
Well, I think, Mr. Thiel, can you answer that question?
Yeah, absolutely. Hey, thanks all for having me on here. Apologize that couldn't be in there in person today. So can you, can you say the question one more time real quick?
Just the transition process for the software? What does that look like?
Yeah, absolutely. So we do it kind of in a few phases. We're going to start rolling out hardware here, actually shipping out next month. We will turn on the software as well next month. So typical rollout time to get everything up and running for body worn cameras is three to four months. We'll get the cars then completed after that for the in-car camera systems, and then the interview rooms, and you'll be off and running with everything within six to eight months.
Oh, that's not bad. Thank you.
RS 24183, consider a memorandum resolution approving the inspection, cleaning, and repair of personal protective equipment to rely on total care in the amount of $107,390 for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counselor Chief Kavinsky have seven items on the agenda. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Cagle and City Council. I will do my best to get through these efficiently so we can get to our national night out events. Clean Fire Department provides our personal protective equipment for our firefighters, which is the firefighting coat, trousers, boots, helmets, and gloves. The NFPA standard 1851 requires an advanced cleaning of that gear twice a year, and then inspection of all that PPE once a year, or when a routine inspection determines potential damage. The services are required to be provided by the original manufacturer, or a verified independent service provider, or a trained and certified member of the department. Lion First Responder's PPE is the original manufacturer of our current PPE, and it is a subsidiary of the Lion First Responder PPE. They are trained and certified to provide the required services. They will provide the advanced inspections, advanced cleaning, and repairs as necessary through a Sourcewell contract number 010424. The amount for fiscal year 25 is $107,390. This is a budget expense with no additional funding that's required, and it does conform to city policy through the Sourcewell contract that was previously mentioned. And we recommend the approval for the $107,390 for the inspection and repair of PPE through Lion First Responder's PPE.
Thank you, Chief. RS 24184, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of fire department uniforms from Impact Promotional Services LLC, DBA, Got You Covered, Workwear, and Uniforms, in the amount of $118,731 for fiscal year 2025.
And now underneath that PPE, our firefighters have to have their uniforms to make sure they're looking and presenting professionally as well. Our department provides uniforms for our personnel in ways of a Class C, a Class B, and a Class A dress uniform. And as you can see in the presentation, the different uses and policies, procedures that we utilize to determine when those uniforms are worn. We have conducted wear tests and comparisons of the selected gear. There were numerous vendors that were contacted to receive the pricing. So although we are using a Sourcewell or a buy board contract, we did contact all of these vendors to make sure that we are getting competitive pricing, even though we're using a, a contract. We experienced many issues with Galls, who was our vendor in fiscal year 22 and 23. Took them more than 11 months to deliver our uniform t-shirts. They weren't truthful when they were providing our order updates, and they did try to charge for items that were never purchased. So we have excluded them from any future bids for the next couple of years until we can determine that they've got their, they've got their act together, to be quite blunt and honest. The financial impact for those Class A, B, and C uniforms for fiscal year 25 is $118,731. This is a budget expense. It does conform to city policy through buy board contract number 670-22.
RS 24185, consider a memorandum resolution approving the purchase and repairs of portable radios and mobile radios from Daly and Wells Communications, Inc., in the amount of $426,182.84 for fiscal year 2025.
This is for the radio purchases for all city departments, which is a collective effort with Finance Department and Ms. Tanglin. And they, they took the lead last year. They are not able to be present tonight, so we have assisted with getting this presentation put together. And the reason we do this is what we found out the last couple of years is we will go out and go to bid for our radios, and then other departments do the same thing, and then we have to come back to City Council and increase the bid, which makes it difficult for finance. So we were able to work together and get everybody's radio needs for the new fiscal year put together all at once. This is a coordinated effort with the Police Department, Solid Waste, Transportation Departments for the bulk purchase of our radios, parts, and repairs from Daly and Wells Communications. Fire Department is going to be getting more, four mobile radios, 10 portable radios of the XL 200P, and 10 additional XL 200P portable radios, and then an estimated repair amount of about $52,498 for fiscal year 25. Homeland Security Emergency Management will be purchasing one XL 200 portable radio for an amount of $9,867.94. Police Department will be purchasing 30 XL 185P portable radios for an amount of $129,427.20 with estimated annual repairs of $27,000. Solid Waste Department will be purchasing 12 mobile radios for $33,995.16. And the Transportation Department will have two XL 45P mobile radios for $5,044.46. And for Solid Waste and Transportation, those are typically radios that are going into new fleet, pieces of fleet that are coming online. So the total requested for this purchase for all departments is $426,182.84. This is made through the Daly and Wells Communications HGAC Cooperative Contract Number RA 05-21, and these are all budgeted expenses. No additional funding will be required, and it does conform to city policy.
RS 24186, consider a memorandum resolution purchasing consumable medical supplies for the Fire Department in the amount of $447,544 for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. And for the residents that are new and the ones that are at home, these are items that come before the council every year. So this is just routine for them to come and present it to us, because these are items that are needed, and you will see that from the Police Department as well as the Fire Department. So if you do not hear us asking questions, these are items that we have seen. The costs may change here and there, but this is routine for each department to have some continued items that they will purchase, especially for our first responders. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. 23,000 times a year, the Colleen Fire Department goes out on an EMS response, and about 17,000 of those times, a patient is transported to the hospital. This item is for the consumable medical supplies that we utilize in the back of those ambulances when we treat a patient or transport a patient to the hospital. In order to conform with city policy, our consumable medical supplies are purchased through cooperative contracts, but we like to stay competitive. And the main two providers who can provide the service to us, and these, these deliveries come three to four times a week, EMS captains order the supplies and make sure our inventory is up to date every day so that an ambulance does not run out of any of the critical supplies that we need. So we utilize Bounty Medical through buy board contract number 610-20, and Henry Schein, who is also able to use the same buy board contract. What this allows us to do is go week to week and check and make sure we are getting competitive pricing, and it's very unique and interesting when we talk to the, the representatives when they put a price increase in. We're able to say, well, hey, we didn't see a price increase with the other company. And it's a very competitive process that we're able to make sure that we don't see increases that we can't maintain control of. So our financial impact for fiscal year 25 is a combined, combined expenditure not to exceed $447,544, and this is a budget expense with no additional funding required.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Secretary.
RS 24187, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of personal protective equipment from North American Fire Equipment Company, NAFCO, in the amount of $248,894 for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked about the cleaning and inspection of that PPE that the firefighters wear. However, that bunker gear, is what we call it in industry terms, that bunker gear does also have a lifespan, five years of frontline service with an additional five years of reserve service. And so the Fire Department has continued to replace 20% of our inventory each year, which equates to approximately 50 sets annually. This is what that bunker gear looks like. So many times we've brought this to you without actually showing you what that bunker gear looks like, the coat, the trousers, the gloves, helmet, and the hood that protects the ears and the neck of the firefighter without the air pack being worn. This gear goes through a whole lot. Every time we go into a fire, every time we train, it gets strained, and that's the reason for the cleaning and inspection, and also why it has to be replaced every 10 years. Our structural PPE is available through NAFCO and the Lion First Responder's PPE Sourcewell Contract Number 010420-LIO. The financial impact for fiscal year 25 is $248,894, and this is a budget expense that does conform to city policy.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Secretary.
RS 24188, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the personal protective equipment for Colleen Fire Academy from 911 Safety Equipment LLC in the amount of $77,480 for fiscal year 2025.
Mayor, thank you. This item was a little bit more in-depth. I'm going to turn this over to Captain Bradley Jansen, who is the director of our Colleen Fire Academy, as he put a lot of time and effort into this, a lot of research as well. And I want to give one of our other team members an opportunity to shine rather than have this guy stand up here for seven presentations.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Captain Jansen, I'm the captain of the training for the Colleen Fire Academy. So I'm going to talk to you about a rental agreement for our personal protective equipment that we use for the training of our cadets. The Colleen Fire Department Training Academy provides personal protective equipment, or PPE bunker gear, as the chief said, for our cadets to include the coat, trousers, boots, helmets, nomex hoods, and gloves. The ensemble is necessary to protect the students while training in the environments immediately dangerous to life or health during our Fire Academy, and also during the four month Academy total training to get them acclimated to working in bunker gear as we do on shift. The Texas Administrative Code Title 37, Part 13, Chapter 435, Rule 435.27, requires that NFPA compliant PPE be used during live fire exercises. And the KFD has performed a study to compare the difference between renting and purchasing PPE for the KFA cadets. Basically, bunker gear only lasts 10 years, and then it has to be replaced. And with the hard work that we do, training in the academy, we put our gear through a lot of work, and we tend to cause some damage to it. And whenever you purchase it, we have to buy all-new gear to replace it if that is the case. So whenever I did a comparison based on 10 years, there was no way to get a good ROI on that gear because the cost of renting, to wear that responsibility of replacing the gear and repairing it, maintaining it, cleaning it, all falls on the rental company rather than on the Colleen Fire Department. So based on all that information, the different entities that we used, including the cadets renting for the PPE, one of the biggest benefits is that it can be custom fit. For instance, right now, we have two females that are five foot and 411. They have very small feet, and we may have to purchase a set of boots if we were to be buying gear that would never get used by someone again. And so that's kind of obviously not a good investment. We also have a couple of gentlemen that are over six foot three, around 250 pounds. They also require some larger gear that we're not going to be able to get a good return on. So that's where the rental company comes in. The repair, maintenance, and cleaning costs are included in the rental agreement as well as the shipping to and from. In this case, the company I want to use, 911 Safety Equipment, is Pennsylvania. Purchasing the PPE would require the higher overall cost with a worse ROI over a 10-year life of bunker gear. And then additionally, the Fire Academy fees have been increased in order to help cover the cost of this new expense. Financial impact, the 911 Safety Equipment will provide the rental of the PPE to the Colleen Fire Academy for a four-month period, and also provide the gear for our Colleen Independent School District Academy. We have cadets from, in their junior and senior year that get the training over that two-year program. And whenever they graduate high school, they graduate with a fire certification and a EMT certification, and we give them their bunker gear as well to get them through that training. Cost includes the round-trip shipping. The fiscal year 2025 budgeted expenditure is not to exceed $77,480. It conforms to city policy and Texas Local Government Code through the GSA Purchasing Cooperative GS 07F 0424M, and city staff recommends authorizing this expenditure.
Thank you. I just have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
You said the cost has gone up. To be, be a part of the class, you have to pay.
Yes, ma'am. So we put, obviously, our, our hired personnel, we put them through that academy, but we also have it open to the public, so any person can join the Fire Academy, but it does cost tuition in order to do so.
How would that affect the students coming out of KISD? Would they have?
It will not affect KISD students at all. Their, nothing changes for them. Their cost is completely covered through the KISD contract that we have with them. So nothing changes for them whatsoever. This is only for, the cost increase only affects the adult academy, and that has not affected our enrollment at all. We are having many phone calls over our next, we've got a list for our next academy, and we had 33 people start this academy. So we are as full as can be.
Okay, thank you. It was my concern was mostly for the student.
Yes, ma'am. No. Yes, ma'am. That is all completely covered with them. Nothing changes for them. We will take care of those KISD students. We're very proud of them.
All right, me too. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24189, consider a memorandum resolution purchasing a Power Pro 2 Stretcher Power Load System and Pro Care Preventative Maintenance from Stryker Sales LLC in the amount of $80,865 for fiscal year 2025.
Welcome back, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. The Colleen Fire Department utilizes Stryker Sales LLC to purchase our powered stretchers and load systems, the load stretcher and, which load the stretcher and the patient into the ambulance with minimal lifting required, helping prevent injury to our personnel. We have shifted about four years ago, three and a half years ago, to use Stryker, and also Stryker Pro Care with each new piece of equipment we purchase. The Stryker Pro Care is an extended warranty, which The Stryker Pro Care is an extended warranty which encompasses all parts, labor, travel, maintenance, and batteries for each registered piece of equipment for up to five years. And then we also have an option to extend it for two more years, depending on what the condition of that equipment is, when we come upon the five-year age of that piece of equipment. This purchase replaces a fernal stretcher, which has exceeded its usable life expectancy. And just to give you, again, a little bit of visual of what these cots are, cots, stretchers, whatever you want to call them for layman's terms, over here to the right, that is that power load system. This load system is in the back of the ambulance. These two forks are responsible for lifting that stretcher. And where you see here on the left, that stretcher is fully suspended by that power load system up to seven hundred pounds. This essentially eliminates any kind of shoulder injuries, back injuries, lifting of any patients. And where we saw over the last twenty-five or thirty years of the fire service and EMS industry is where most of our injuries were, was lifting patients in and out of the ambulance by lifting that cot. So these have been a great innovation. If you take a look over here, the control section of the cot, you press a button and it raises and lowers the cot with those battery packs and that hydraulic system. So these are a absolutely essential investment that in my time here, we have seen no injuries related to the lifting of patients on the stretcher into and out of the ambulance. Depending on the age of our current equipment, we request either one or two replacement systems with each fiscal year. This year is for one system, and that is because of the delays in our ambulances that are being built. Some of our new ambulances, we purchased with one of these systems already in it as part of the purchase price. So we only need one system this year. We will go back to budgeting for two systems for next year. The fiscal year twenty-five expenditure will be an amount not to exceed eighty thousand, eight-hundred sixty-five dollars. This is a budget expense with no additional funding required, and it does conform to the city procurement policy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, how long should we expect this eighty thousand dollar investment to last over the years?
Five years minimum, and depending on how busy the ambulance is and how much action that unit sees, we can see up to seven years. Our intention is to, when that ambulance is decommissioned in that five-to-seven-year range, decommission it with that stretcher system in it. And when we buy a new ambulance to replace it, it will have a new stretcher system that comes with the new ambulance.
Understood. And do we have to make any configurations to the existing ambulances to accommodate this technology?
There is a minor configuration change that they cut into the floor so that the frame, the power load system is mounted to the actual frame of the modular box. It's a nominal fee that we started with, and since then, our Support Services Division has been certified on how to do that. So now our firefighters in the Support Services Division are able to install those power load tracks, is what they're called.
Okay, great information. Thank you.
RS twenty-four-one-nine-one, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a special warranty deed conveying approximately zero-point-one-eight-eight acre of real property out of Lot One, Block One of the Airport Park Addition to Providential Holdings Management, L.C. The subject property is generally located on the west side of Rosewood Drive, south of the intersection of Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard, FM twenty-four-ten, Colleen, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protim and City Council. This first item is conveying property, and the next slide will show the exact location of the property, the property that's located on the west side of Rosewood Drive and south of Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard to Providential Holdings Management to allow for a proposed convenience store and gas station. The property of interest that would be conveyed from the city to Providential Holdings is where the arrow is. This property was deeded to the city of Colleen in nineteen-ninety. Also, Providential Holdings Management is the owner of the entire acreage, and I'll show that on the next slide, that's located immediately west of the subject property. So this is the subject property that they're looking for a special warranty deed from the city on. And then from here to here to here is the three-point-six acres. QT South has submitted plans for proposed gas station and convenience store at this location. It's actually going to occupy about half of that site, and I've got a slide that shows that. And they've requested as a part of this that this point-one-eight-eight acre site be included. And then QT is also, as a part of their improvements, going to be making some intersection improvements for the value of four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. This is the project location, as I say, that represents about half of the entire ownership. This is about one-point-eight-eight acre site, and this is where the proposed gas station and convenience store would go. Just really showing additional information, same thing really. In accordance with Chapter Two Seventy-two, the city has the ability to sell or convey narrow strips of land to the abutting property owner and for less than fair market value. And that's what we're proposing for this instance here. It would go to Providential Holdings Management. QT South has a ground lease with them for the terms as mentioned on the slide. If approved, the property would be conveyed, as I said, for a nominal amount as allowed by state law. And then was a key factor to note here is that this would allow the entire property to go back on the city tax rolls. It's about a total of a six million dollar investment. And then also, those additional revenues will all go into the terms. So the staff is recommending that this property be conveyed to Providential Holdings Management to allow for the development of the QT gas station and convenience store.
Thank you, Mr. Revel. Councilmember Solomon, do you have any questions? Councilmember Solomon? I can't see him. I mean, the screen is... That's not him. Is that him? Oh, okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Revel.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary? Oh, he's back. Do you have any questions? Oh, that's okay. I don't think he does. All right, thank you, Mr. Revel.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary, Public Hearing?
PH twenty-four-zero-two-seven, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending Chapters Twenty-six and Thirty-One of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, providing for amendments to the city subdivision entry sign and perimeter wall regulations.
Thank you. Mr. Revel?
Yes, ma'am. I presented this item during the September seventeenth meeting, and at the conclusion of that meeting, the council had instructed that the item be delayed till this meeting and to allow for an opportunity for a meeting with the stakeholders. And so I'll go through this item quickly, but it's the same presentation from...
Is there any updates?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I should say, are there any updates?
There are some updates. If I could go through the presentation, I just wanted to quickly say a couple of things. Well, and I'll just start here. As we know, this subdivision perimeter wall would not affect every local road. It only affects the collector roads and ulterior roads. So if you think about an entire subdivision and all the fencing that is done, and compared to all the fencing that would be done in the subdivision, this is a relatively small amount or small part of that. That's the first thing. I just wanted to note that what we're recommending as a part of this ordinance relates to use of materials is locally done. I think you mentioned last week, councilman, or last two weeks, last meeting, that in metro forms, it was voluntarily done. So this precast concrete that we're proposing is something that has been done, was voluntarily done in metro forms. And then, of course, here, this picture is showing what was done recently by a local developer in Harker Heights. Again, this information, I won't go over again because we covered that again with the subdivision entry signs. I would say in terms of, I want to get to the meeting, we did have... This is weird. This doesn't appear to be the most recent presentation. Okay, but we did have a meeting on September the twenty-third with the stakeholders. We met with home builders as well as developers, probably about fifteen people that was represented there. The meeting probably lasted for about two, anywhere from two to three hours. There was a lot of discussion in that meeting. One of the main things that was of concern was related to the use of the material for the perimeter fencing or the perimeter wall. You know, we as staff, you know, shared that we thought we had some flexibility in ordinance because it does allow for that masonry if you want to use a brick layer, but it also allows for precast concrete. And we know, as was shared during the last meeting, that the cost difference associated with using the brick layer and precast concrete is several factors of cost difference. Of course, the existing fencing that's allowed is, the chosen material that's used by most developers and home builders is wood. And that's really where the stakeholders wanted to stay. They wanted to stay with the wooden fence, and staff wanted to stay with the masonry fence, so we could not settle our differences there. However, I would say, being able to use precast concrete appears to me to be somewhat in the middle of, you know, a wall that's laid by a mason and in a wooden fence. So we believe that we've got some level of compromise there even before we had that conversation with them. In addition to that, we had more conversations about, is it possible to make some changes to the acceptance? So right now, as it relates to, in the prior meeting, the ordinance basically said that at the time of acceptance, the subdivision wall had to be built, the perimeter wall had to be built. And so we were able to make some changes based on feedback from the stakeholders to make it such that the perimeter wall does not have to be built until the first lot that's abutting that perimeter wall has a C of O or six months, whichever occurs first. So there was some time delay given there to allow for that to happen. There were additional changes made to clarify that the wall needed to be engineered, and there needed to be construction specifications, and that was really made to align with other areas in our code that kind of speaks to walls that are four feet, or stone walls that are four feet or higher, having to be engineered. So those were the kind of concessions that we, that were made, some of the notable concessions that were made. There was also a change in the language related to the subdivision signs in terms of their placement. We had restricted that they could not be placed within the drainage easement, but after talking with the developers and home builders, we made that exception that that could be allowed. And then also related to the subdivision signs, we basically have a standard that basically has no plastic could be used, but after talking to the home builders, we did allow for an opportunity for consideration for that by basically saying it can't be used unless approved by the executive director or the designatee. And that was language that was basically developed from the conversation with the developers and home builders. I also believe that in terms of agreement, there was also agreement that maintenance needed to happen, right? And that maintenance should be borne by the homeowners or the Property Owners Association. So there was total agreement with that. Again, where the disagreement was, was the use of the materials. And so this ordinance reflects those changes that I mentioned, but the primary change related to the use of the materials, that has not changed, and the city stands by that. Now, of course, you know, the costs associated with precast concrete versus a wooden fence, you know, they have numbers, we have numbers. You look at, you know, there's some costs that say a wooden fence to be replaced is fifty dollars a linear foot. There's some costs that say precast concrete to be replaced is a hundred-and-fifty dollars a linear foot, so three times the cost. But if you're looking at, if we're only looking at the initial cost, that's fine, but as a city, we're not just concerned about the initial costs or short-term concerns, but if you look over the long term of thirty years, and consider that maybe in just two replacements of that wooden fence, the cost kind of washes out. So again, that's pretty much an overview, and that's pretty much where things currently stand.
Thank you. Councilmember... Let the representative of the council on the call. Mayor Protim?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Revel, for that.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for recapping the meeting that you all had and communication with the stakeholders. Some of the feedback that I've received, not only from the citizens, you know, in general, was regarding the material option. And so I guess my particular hang-up, and if you can help maybe walk me through this part of it...
Yes, ma'am.
...is the idea of this precast wall versus something else, right? So versus what I saw that was quite beautiful, higher-end areas, had those wrought iron fences with the slats, you know, so having an option of precast versus something. I don't know what that something is, something else could be. Did that come up in your meeting as a side of the wood fence, but alternatives to keep it beautiful, but also give another option for builders, especially depending on the type of development that they're creating?
I think there was discussion about, you know, the possibility of options, and maybe even possibly some openness, but a lot of the conversation was related to wood versus masonry.
Are there any other options besides the masonry?
Sure, sure. So if you look at our, and we don't, you know, besides what this ordinance speaks to the subdivision wall, you know, we have a definition for that, which is masonry. If you're talking about a fence in general, you know, there are options for what could be used in the fence in general. It could be wood, it could be metal. There could be a host of different things that could be used. It could be masonry. So there are a number of options with fencing in general. It's been our experience, though, when you offer those options, the options that, the option that's chosen, most of the time is what you see out there now, is the wooden fence.
And I understand, we're trying to move away from that aesthetically, long-term. I do understand that for the long-term. My question, those were two materials particularly, was the masonry versus that wrought iron with the slats.
And wrought iron could be, that could be something that's allowed too. But again, it's... You could provide those options, but it's been the experience, if you provide those options and they're equally available, the lower cost often is usually was chosen.
Mr. Kegel?
I think the other thing to remember with a wrought iron open fence, all of these yards back up to major arterials or collectors, say WS Young, Tremere, Stagecoach, so people are going to be looking in your backyard if it's open unless you have some very intense landscaping.
Yes, sir. I did see some that were shown to me in different areas that had the slats. They were wrought iron with slats. I don't know how, I don't know the technology or the terms for that, but it was quite different.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Revel, for the presentation. Thank you to the staff for meeting again with the stakeholders and trying to get some more input on this thing. I heard your comment about if it's a masonry wall needing engineer drawings. I'm looking at the proposed ordinance right now, and I see that section actually struck out. It's Twenty-six-two-oh-one subsection F is lined through where it says detail plans for walls shall be submitted with the construction plans, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad to see that it struck out. I don't think that, you know, one of the things that we talk about when we talk about development period in the city or any city is how efficient we are at it and how quick we can get all things turned around from a customer service standpoint.
Sure.
So I don't, I would be weary of adding additional labors and additional processes in that regard, especially if we're going to require the HOA to maintain it. It's different if the city was going to maintain it, then I would probably lean towards needing that. And then to Mayor Protim's question or comment about additional materials, I've been trying to also rack my own brain and see like what other options are available out there. Obviously, wood is what we're trying to get away from because of the aesthetics when you drive... When you drive down Stagecoach, Bunny Trail, West Cliff, you see these. So how can we come up with something that is not going to be solely on the property owner and create a, obviously, a more aesthetically pleasing corridor for the city? So getting away from wood, I saw what you guys put on here was true masonry, which is you have a mason come out and build it out of brick or stone. Obviously, that's, you know, sometimes cost prohibitive. You guys came up with a great option for precast and we see that in some newer subdivisions like Mitchell Farms and Cedar Brook Ridge and Harker Heights, Regency Ridge across from Lions Club Park on Stan Schluter. So you see it in some places. So I think that's a good sort of middle ground. And I don't know, I just saw this today. There's composite material out there that's used, it was really popular for decks. Now they're starting to use it for fencing. It's a zero-maintenance product. It's composite, resistant to fading and wear and tear. So I don't know if that would be another option that would provide a more maintenance-free option for the HOA. Maybe be a little more cost-friendly if we added that with masonry columns every three or four lots or something like that. That was really the only other option that I found that I think met what we're trying to get away from is having a maintenance burdensome fence or aesthetic to look at. I don't know if you guys had come across that or not, or if that had come up during your stakeholders' meeting.
No, sir, not to my knowledge. And I wanted to say, I do want to refer to section 26201. Just wanted to make sure you saw that. In that section there, we did strike through. We were trying to make sure that the wall was constructed such that it could last, it could be durable. And we did strike through that and did say subdivision perimeter wall shall be designed by a licensed engineer. So I wanted to make sure that you saw that section as well.
Which section is that?
26201C.
Or walls, okay. But obviously, if they're going with a precast, those come with their own specs and details. You're not going to require an engineer to come up with a design for a precast option, are you? I don't think that would make sense.
As long as it doesn't require any footing design requirements. And so we would have to make sure that we work with our, as it currently stands, if there is a stone wall, and it could be the stone wall is mostly the masonry layer. We do have a requirement that basically says if it's over four feet, it has to be engineered. So, but if it comes with its own, if it doesn't require engineering, then yeah, we can make that exception, but.
Okay, like for example, Mitchell Farms, did y'all require an engineer to design that precast fence?
I really couldn't tell you because I did not review those plans.
Okay.
Mr. Councilmember Alvarez, Mr. Kegel would like to speak.
Yes.
I was just going to say, we put this in there because the discussion was, how do we know what this verbiage means about a manner to last 30 years? Because we were assured that a bad wall can be built with this composite material and fall over soon if it's not done correctly. So the question was, how do you determine if it's going to be built correctly? And on these fences, foundation is everything. It doesn't matter how sturdy the wall is if the foundation is not. And if the foundation shifts, the wall's going to shift. So we didn't know what else to do, how to guarantee that the HOA is going to get a quality product that doesn't fall over or fall apart in the first few years.
And I understand and agree with it if it's a wall that's being constructed, a true masonry wall. But if we're talking about a precast option that I can go buy somewhere off the shelf and have it installed, maybe the language would be in that case for a precast, you follow the manufacturer's specs and details.
I don't think they have an answer for that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, okay. Councilmember Bowart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for city staff and for the stakeholders that got together to reconvene on this topic. Ever since I began to speak on this, I felt it was appropriate to work to get away from the wood, referencing West Elm's, Robinette, Bunny Trail, West Cliff and all the other streets. I never was in favor of us specifying one particular material for fencing because I think that's just a bit too broad. I do like the idea of incorporating the composite material potentially for it. I was listening to the summary of the meeting to find out what concessions were made, you know, what type of discussions were made. And I understand you guys discussed the acceptance, the drainage easement for sign entrances, incorporation of plastic at the discretion of the director, and then HOA maintenance. So that was, that was good to hear. As far as the engineering of the fencing in regards to what was just discussed, it's just important to me that we do ensure we have well-built fences. And so I'm not going to suggest that we need engineering for them, but I will establish that. We don't need fences to fail, right, for HOAs to take over. So that's where I am on it. Mitchell Farms looks great with that fence. It's almost a hallmark. When you get over there, you see that fence, you recognize Mitchell Farms just kind of by default. And so I do believe it'd be good to see that, which is aesthetically appealing for our city across town. And that's just kind of where I am on that right now. Thank you.
Mr. Kegel?
I'd just like to add one last thing. When we were putting this ordinance together, we didn't do it with an eye towards making a deal or trying to put something out that was too ridiculous so we could come back to something more normal. We watered it down as much as we thought we could. We didn't, it wasn't requiring brick or masonry. We made an expansive definition of masonry to include this precast concrete, to do the best we could the first time we rolled this out. And I'm thinking back over my career, I'm 30, 35 years when I first started. The issue in the cities I was in, Lovegan Plano, wasn't whether these walls were appropriate. The developers all believed in them. It was who was going to maintain it. At that time, was the city going to maintain it or an HOA? But it, but these are, all I'm trying to say is this is not a new issue. For many cities, it's been around for many decades because they know their city's going to be there a long time and these'll last. And even one of the developers in the meeting said that people that live in communities behind masonry walls have more pride in their community. That was the statement made by one of the developers at our meeting. And I believe that to be a true statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon, do you have anything? This is just discuss, we discussing the item. We're not voting on it yet.
Right, right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that, first of all, I think the walls, I mean, we need this. And I think that if we're going to build them, they got to be stable. They got to last a long time. And, you know, I don't, we definitely can't go with fence, you know. The way Stagecoach looked over in District 2, I wish we had this in place years ago. Rosewood would have looked much better. And Stagecoach, Tremere, you know, on and on. So I understand this is difficult, but I think that we, I think we're going to have to keep a standard here and not compromise to the point that where we're back to fences or near fences, something that looks like. I don't, I think whatever it's going to be, I think that we should, it should be blanketed. It shouldn't be a little bit of this, a little bit of that. I think just whatever we say for subdivisions, it should be all, for one subdivision should be for all the subdivisions. And I think we should just blanket this. Now, I do think that we may need to consider maybe table this and so we can further discuss it, you know, and to know what we really doing. And if we're really, we're not clear right now, that's my opinion.
Yes, sir. Right now, we're just, is, was that a motion of direction?
Uh, yes, until we can get, so we can be clear. Because it seemed like we maybe not, we may not be as clear as we should be. That would be mine. We can talk about it more.
Yes, sir.
Discussion, yes.
Yes, sir. Can I get a second? Is there a second to the motion?
I'm going to second that, madam, but I also have a question.
Okay.
I would like to.
I'm just trying to see if he's finished.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Can we can move on from you? We got a motion of direction and we got a second to the motion of direction. Anything else, Councilmember Solomon, so I can go to the next person?
No, ma'am. I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
I second with the caveat that I would like to know more about Councilmember Alvarez's composite fencing recommendation. I would like to know more about that if staff could bring us or send us some information on that.
All right, thank you. All right, before we take a vote, I just want to throw something out there. I have two concerns. I had the opportunity myself and our assistant city manager to talk to the leadership of Fort Cabazos. And after leaving that meeting, I maybe talked an hour or two, I'm not sure how long. One other thing was affordability for soldiers coming into the area. Affordability is something that we push on our comprehensive plan. Making the standards on how our neighborhood look, that was on our comprehensive plan. Everything that we have discussed tonight is for the ordinance that you're bringing, proposing to the council, comprehensive plan. Our neighborhoods, okay, that's important, comprehensive plan. And also affordability and quality of life, all of this is comprehensive plan. What concerns me is when I heard that the cost, that the city and also developer builders, y'all came up to an agreement that it'd be passed on to the owners, the home association. Just ensuring that affordability to me. Because we do have soldiers coming in, I believe every last one of them in the family, including our residents, and Colleen should be afforded, if you're a first-time homeowner, to purchase a home. And it shouldn't be just outrageous, especially with the interest rate. That's just one concern. My other concern is that with this ordinance, it's great if that's what the council decide. But we're running away from fencing. But yet still, we don't have an ordinance in place to take care of the fences that's just terrible. Everybody know we got a problem, but we're not enforcing the fences that are not in code. So that's another concern. We're setting standards to build a new standard, but we haven't corrected the bad standard. So that's something council needs to consider. Regardless of how you vote on this, you're holding the future builders accountable for something, the homes, which if that's what the ordinance say or comprehensive plan, that's not my argument. But my argument is maintaining it. We can't maintain what we already have. And I think you really need to consider that too when it comes to ordinance. You have put one in place, but I still, city's still going to look the way it is until we hold the people accountable that's already breaking our code. And these fences are just terrible, especially down on Stagecoach. When somebody put a fence up and then they got, I'm not going to describe it because people may go by there. I don't want to do that. That's something y'all should consider also. So with that being said, all in favor of tabling this, yes. All opposed, no. Will table and Mayor Protem want information to come on what council?
On the composite fences?
Yes, ma'am, sir.
Thank you.
Can I, Councilmember, are you, Solomon, you in favor of tabling it, yes or no?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Where's the?
Do, Madam Mayor?
We're in the middle of voting right now on this motion of direction, if you can hold one. I can't see it because you on this, I'm trying to see how the vote is. All right, so it's four to one with Councilmember Boyd in opposition. Okay, so the item is tabled and Councilmember Solomon, it passed. You could not talk in the middle of a vote. And once it's voted on, that item cannot be discussed anymore. And I apologize for that.
I do understand that. I was trying to catch it before, but, okay.
Well, I apologize, but we were in the middle of voting on it, so I apologize for that. Now, if you want to do a motion of direction to that, if you want to change something, you can. And council, it's up to you if you want him to talk on it, yes or no? No? No, no, okay. All right, thank you. Oh, God, why did we vote? I didn't even see all that. Jesus, take the wheel. All right, so Madam City Attorney, we have, we done voted a motion of direction. Can we continue to talk on it if the council approved individuals to talk on it?
Your governing standards say no, but those are your rules. Those aren't, that's not state law. So the council can decide to do something outside of your rules if you'd like. Also, I just want to mention, because we're still in the work session part of this and it was advertised as a public hearing, so we usually do go ahead and hold those public hearings.
Yes, ma'am, we are. Even though they already made a decision to table, we still have to go through that. Yes, ma'am. So Councilmember Alvarez, did you want to speak? Okay, all right. Thank you. Madam Secretary? Councilmember Solomon, you still want to say something? Counsel, is that okay?
I just wanted to add, Madam Mayor, that when we talk about tabling it, to add a date of when we're going to come back to this, are we tabling it just for good?
Yes, sir. You can amend that motion of direction to add a date to it.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Madam City Attorney?
A motion to amend, a motion would need to still be on the floor. You've already taken a vote, so you could do a second motion of direction to clarify that.
Okay, so restate your motion of direction, but put a date to it.
Okay. My motion of direction is to table it until 30 days from now?
Okay, let me see what 30 days from now is.
Next.
So this is October the 1st, so the next will be October the 5th. That's when we'll come back, Councilmember Solomon.
Yes, and I'm just. Yes, ma'am, that's what I wanted.
November the 5th. Is, you still second that motion of direction? We have a meeting on that day. We can't get around it. Okay, so can I get that so they can hear?
I second that, ma'am.
Okay, so a motion of direction to table RS-24-191 until 5 November. And the motion of direction was tabled by, seconded by Mayor Protem. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Councilmember Solomon?
Yes.
It's PH-24-027, public hearing item. But we still have to have a public hearing on it. So the motion of direction is to table PH-24-027 until November 5th. It was made by Councilmember Solomon and seconded by Mayor Protem. And the motion of direction passes now, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 to 0. All right, Madam Secretary?
PH 24040, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Boxick Baldwin on behalf of True Foundation LLC, case number Z 2419, to rezone approximately .3 acres out of Lot 2, Block 1 of the Bunny Trail Village replat, number 1, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R2 Two-Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 3413 Abraham Drive, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Revell?
Yes, ma'am. This is a request to rezone property that's located at 3413 Abraham Drive from R1 Single Family to R2 Two-Family District. If approved, the applicant intends to develop a two-family residential home. And then this shows the zoning and platting history for the property. The star shows the approximate location of the property and surrounding areas. It is consistent with the residential mix, land use. It's a part of the control growth sector. Further, the comprehensive plan recommendations noted on the slide. Uh, further is the comprehensive plan recommendations noted on the slide. All notifications were accomplished with one written response in opposition to the request. Uh, that written response, um, in opposition is starred on the, um, property here.
Excuse me, Councilman Solomon, Francis, you need to mute yourself, we can hear you, sir, please? Thank you. Uh, yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, as this is dealing with a single lot, no traffic impact analysis is required, and no parkland dedication ordinance is required, um, associated with this property. It meets all environmental requirements and all utilities are available and will be provided by the City of Colleen. Uh, staff believes that this completely comports and consistent with the comp plan, as well as the surrounding community, will not have any adverse impacts. Um, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request to rezone the property as noted. Uh, this request was brought before the planning and zoning commission twice. On August the twelfth, it was brought before them, and their initial decision was to delay it by six months because there was some concerns about, um, ownership. However, after the, the city attorney's office, um, looked thoroughly into the matter and, and confirmed that True Fountain LLC is the rightful owner, the case was brought back to the planning commission on August the twenty-sixth, and they concluded to vote, um, seven to zero to recommend approval, um, with one dissension from Commissioner Gukaisen.
Thank you, there are no questions, Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-four zero four one, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z twenty-four twenty-two, to rezone parts of lots five through nine, Block One, out of the Morris and Good addition from B five-
Madam Secretary, I apologize. Counsel, we have to stop the meeting and tell Councilmember Alvarez to retire, I apologize. This meeting back to order. Uh, for the ones that are at home and the ones that are new in the audience, audience. In order to have a council meeting, you have to have four council members present. And when Councilwoman Coop left, that left us with just four. So if anybody have to leave out, the meeting would have to stop and wait till that person return. And Councilmember Solomon does not count as part of our quorum in person. I apologize, Mr. Revaughn, continue, please.
Um, PH twenty-four zero four one, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z twenty-four twenty-two, to rezone parts of lots five through nine, Block One, out of the Morris and Good addition, from B five Business District to R one, single-family residential district. The subject properties are locally addressed as seven zero one, seven zero three, seven zero five, seven zero seven, and seven zero nine, East Avenue G, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Revaughn.
This, this is one of, and, and the next one is two of our, our city-initiated rezoning requests. And so I'm not gonna, I'm gonna kinda go through these really quickly. Um, you see basically where the property-
Mr. Revaughn, would you stand by? Madam Secretary, could you read both of them then, cause they're both lead the same?
Yes, ma'am.
He can just go from one to the other. You will make that transition.
Yes, ma'am.
PH twenty-four zero four two, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z twenty-four twenty-three, to rezone lots two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, Block Two, out of the Morris and Good addition, from B five Business District to R one, single-family residential district. The subject properties are locally addressed as eight zero three, eight zero five, eight zero seven, nine zero three, nine zero five, and nine zero seven, East Avenue G, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Revaughn.
These properties for this case are located on the seven hundred block of Avenue G. They are all single-family residential structures, they currently have a zoning of the B five, and we're correcting that. And that's just showing the surrounding properties. All of this is really not changing. All notifications were done, there was no, um, response from the surrounding property owners being against this. And so staff is recommending, uh, that this be approved, it's consistent with requirements, and it makes sure that these structures line up with our zoning. Uh, this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they also voted to recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Revaughn. The next item that you will be discussing is PH dash twenty-four dash zero four two.
Yes, ma'am, now, these are basically on the, the same thing, city-initiated rezoning, um, located on the eight hundred and nine hundred block of Avenue G. Um, the one in the middle that is not included here, which is this one right here, this owner actually responded and said he did not wanna participate. And so that, that, that property's not included. Um, again, it's the same thing, just correcting the zoning. All notifications were done, no surrounding property owners are opposed to it. And staff is recommending approval. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval by a vote of eight to zero as well.
So this is staff initiated, they're the same, both want, you wanna make sure that everything is lined up in the same zoning, so a resident won't have to come here and pay to get it rezoned. The city is taking the initiative to do it for them.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else, Councilmember Madam?
Yes, for the individual, the, the resident that chose out, they may known that they'll have to pay if they wanna rezone, cause this affects their selling of the house or anything else, correct?
Well, it, it could potentially, I mean, the, the, the history has been that a number of folks have come to us and had to rezone because of that issue. You know, they, they tried to resell, they tried to get an appraisal, because of banking requirements, there were challenges.
Okay.
Uh, we disclosed and, and shared as much information as we could with the resident, the resident made the decision.
And now, they understand this was their last, their only chance?
Well-
Okay, thank you.
They, they can decide, if, if, maybe they don't have a need to, to do anything with the property, and maybe at the point where they do, they'll, they'll go through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Revaughn, Madam Secretary, discussion items.
DS twenty-four zero six four, discuss and consider setting a date for the city council annual special workshop town hall.
Thank you, counsel, we already went through this, but Mr. Kager, the floor is yours.
Mayor, I believe we had a problem with the date we selected. Okay, um, so I, I think the, uh, the dates that you had considered were ten twenty-nine or eleven seven?
Yes, sir, we're set up up there.
Yeah, I don't have-
Would somebody click there for the council? With everything that's going on, uh, with everything that we have going on and people traveling, uh?
Mayor and counsel, so your governing standards and expectations state that you'll have an annual special workshop or town hall meeting, and it should be around the timeframe of October. So, um, that October eighth was the meeting you chose first, it conflicts with previous scheduled events. And so I think some proposed alternative dates were October twenty-ninth or November seventh?
Right, those are some great dates, anybody wanna make a motion or direction, pick a date, Councilmember Board?
I make a motion for us to choose Thursday, November seventh, at five P M. for the date.
Thank you, thank you, sir, Councilmember Gonzalez?
I would like to second that.
Mayor Protem, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, I'll second that.
Okay, let the record show that Councilmember Solomon has signed off, is that correct? All right, this is it, right here. All in favor of the motion of direction to have our meeting, our special meeting on November, uh, special workshop town hall on November the seventh at five o'clock? All right, motion of direction carries for the zero. We will now go into our citizen comments, you have four minutes, Melissa Brown. Counsel, we have someone at the podium, we cannot have sidebar.
I just, I wanna verify with the mayor before I start, there will be a public hearing on perimeter walls?
That was already answered, but your time starts now, three fifty-two.
Uh, so I'm, I'm gonna keep this, uh, very quick. Uh, I believe that both our police chief and our fire chief have done their due diligence in bringing forward proposals. Even though they're cooperatives, uh, they, they went through the process of getting multiple bids, uh, evaluating all of the different options that were there, and they're very careful about spending every precious penny that they have for their departments to make sure that the city and their staff are as safe as possible. Uh, I would ask that the council, um, approve all of the requests that have been put forth by our first responders and the chiefs, uh, because I believe that moreover than beautification, safety of our citizens should be the top priority. And so I just ask that we take their expert opinion and know that they have done their due diligence, they have brought multiple quotes, and even though some of them may be, not be the lowest cost, the lowest cost is not always the best quality, and they're taking quality to make sure everyone is protected, thank you.
Sean Price, you have four minutes. If you have your device on, and I can hear, please silence it, if you need to talk, please go outside. Mr. Price, you have four minutes.
Alrighty, so, when I'm looking at, good evening, counsel, mayor. Um, when I'm looking at everything on today's agenda and what we just went through, um, I, the, the rough cost is sixteen million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, eighty-six dollars, right? So, of this sixteen million dollars, um, is this in addition to the two hundred and twenty-five million that we're gonna spend next year? Or is this included in that budget for next year? I'm unclear with that. So, if I can get that in, and then how, this sixteen million that we're gonna spend now, and that we said that we wanna spend now, and that we actually need to, cause there are certain things that, you know, infrastructure-wise that, that would benefit. Although I have questions about RS twenty-four one, uh, one eighty-two and the manipulation of physical evidence by A I. Not sure if that's a great idea to get in there, and we don't understand the, uh, full legal aspect of that in court just yet. That hasn't been explained, how A I manipulates these videos to present the narrative um, due to defense, or, uh, you know, whether somebody's guilty or, or not. Uh, there are questions in there, how it's redacted and how it's manipulated by A I. Um, so I'm just wondering if that's been mitigated here from Axon, even though the Axon's one of the best and most rated in the nation right now, but they are being litigated, uh, for their evidence manipulation, so I'm just curious with that. So with the hundred and ninety million that we spent last meeting, everybody voted to spend another hundred and ninety million dollars out of, on top of the two hundred and twenty-five million that we already gonna spend anyway due to the budget, and then now this sixteen million that we're adding on top of that, how does that increase our annual, um, debt service rating? Cause it goes up to seventeen million, but now what is it gonna be now that we're gonna pay annually on the, uh, next twenty-year loan of a hundred and ninety million? So that's what I'm looking for when I see all these items up here to spend. And that's my question, you know? And if I could actually get an answer this time from the mayor or the city, or city manager, that would be greatly appreciated, cause, um, you know, I'm getting a little frustrated being ignored or called out. I am, you called me out at the beginning of the meeting, you called my name specifically.
Mr. Cameron, I mean, Mr. Price, stay on topic.
I, I am, I'm just making sure, right?
Sir, I apologize, hold the clock, that's your first warning, Cameron Cochran for making that laugh and disrupting the meeting. Please continue, anything else, sir, start clock?
Well, no, my thing, cause I'm gonna speak on the public hearing, so that's a separate, separate issue.
Thank you.
But I wanted to bring that calling me out at the beginning of the meeting, right?
Sir, thank you. Cameron Cochran, you have four minutes. Chief, would you please get the chair, please? Thank you.
Is this on? Thank you. Do I have the floor?
Sir, you have to sit in the chair so you can be videoed up front and people can see you.
Do I have the floor?
No, you do not, you have to sit in this chair. Am I correct, City Attorney?
You can, uh, the governing standards that say that the speakers should approach the lectern, um, and then our standard protocol has been that the speakers that have the floor are separate from the audience and near the lectern, so that's been your standard protocol, and, uh, we've provided a chair, um, and I think that would, that is appropriate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would strongly propose that we maintain the standard that exists. We've had no one come in this chambers and sit in the audience and speak from the microphone. So I would very much encourage us to maintain the standard that exists and not work to strategically find a way to create chaos and be disruptive, thank you.
With that being said, I do not, council, uh, do all council members agree with Councilmember Board? Can I show her hand? Okay, and do you agree with what he just said? I just need to know, Councilmember Alvarez, I saw her hand up, do you agree with Councilmember Board? Okay, back to you, City Attorney. If he does not come up, my question is, I don't wanna infringe on somebody, uh, First Amendment, will we be going against the First Amendment if we deny him, cause he's not following protocol to speak?
You can enforce rules of protocol, and your standard protocol is to have people approach the lectern. You've given him an opportunity to sit at the lectern or stand at the lectern, um, either would be fine, but that is, I mean, your call whether you want to enforce that.
Thank you. Uh, now getting back to you, do you, you heard her statement? Do you agree with Councilmember Board that everyone will follow our standards that are in place, sir? Mr. Cochran, you have a choice to come and take a seat and speak, or you will not be speaking, it's up to you.
Do I have the floor?
You have a, you don't, I'm gonna ask you one more time, and we moving on. You have the option to come and take this seat, or you will not be speaking.
So according to the American with Disabilities Act?
So, thank you very much, moving on. We will now move on to consent agenda items, Madam Secretary. Consent agenda items, Madam Secretary.
MN twenty-four zero two four, RS twenty-four one seven eight, RS twenty-four one seven nine, RS twenty-four one eight zero, RS twenty-four one eight one, RS twenty-four one eight two, RS twenty-four one eight three, RS twenty-four one eight four, RS twenty-four one eight five, RS twenty-four one eight six, RS twenty-four one eight seven, RS twenty-four one eight eight, RS twenty-four one eight nine, RS twenty-four one nine zero, and RS twenty-four one nine one.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I get a motion to, uh, consider, uh, consent agenda items three to seventeen? Councilmember Alvarez?
Mayor, I'm moving to approve consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Board?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Mayor, may I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, may I get clarification on the tax appraisal district? Is that including with the recommendation of Kenny Wells or not?
Oh, yes, ma'am, the recommendation is Mr. Kenny Wells. Counsel, do you all agree on that? Councilmember Alvarez, Councilboard, Councilmember-
I did have someone finally reach out, respond back. If we can, if counsel still goes with Mr. Wells, that's fine.
Councilmember Wells, Wells, and you said Wells, okay, all right. Uh, the motion was made by Councilmember Alvarez, and it was seconded by Councilmember Board. All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? All opposed, no. It passes seven, four to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready, public hearing.
PH-24027, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending chapters twenty-six and thirty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, providing for amendments to the city's subdivision entry sign and perimeter wall regulations. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Colleen, Texas, amending chapters twenty-six and thirty-one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, providing for amendments to the city's signage and subdivision regulations, providing for standards regarding subdivision entry features and subdivision perimeter walls, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a severability clause, providing for a savings clause, providing for publication and an effective date."
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Mr. Rebell has gone through the slides. This is an item that has been tabled, but because we have, it's been published, we have to go through the public hearing. Hold the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
Taking this opportunity tonight, because typically if it's considered a public hearing, there isn't one at the next meeting. So if there is no HOA property owners will be required to pay the cost of maintenance, including damage caused by motor vehicle accidents. Doesn't matter if it's wood, if it's masonry, or if it's a wrought iron fence on stagecoach. It does not allow for side or back gates through the perimeter fence other than wrought iron when the wall abuts a public amenity. And it does not allow signs on the side of the property if it abuts another property. So it essentially limits where the signs can be put up for a subdivision. I consider sidewalks to be public amenities, so that would mean that wrought iron could be used as long as the property line abuts public sidewalks, if that is what it is defined as, because there's no definition of what a public amenity is. There is an allowance for additional entry feature sizes, but there also comes with a requirement of a five-gallon shrub for every ten square feet of landscaping area, and in addition, the landscaping will have to be twice that of the square footage of any sign face, and then an automated sprinkler system for that landscaping. If the irrigation is through an HOA, you are forcing a higher rate for water fees, because that would be a commercial account. This is long and short-term added costs. We already have code enforcement requirements for care of fences and care of premise, and I do agree with the mayor on that one. We need to enforce those. There are currently actually no requirements in the code for a citizen or a property owner to have a fence at all. This requires sturdier and more expensive walls along collector and arterial streets. We regularly go through and update our thoroughfare plan. The current ordinance has no clause to say that this will be along current collector and arterial streets only. What happens if a street or a road is upgraded to collector or arterial? Will the HOA then be required to go back and build a masonry fence? Because that's not included in there either. By essentially forcing all these subdivisions to be HOA, you continue to increase the cost of property ownership. I would question if this violates the Texas Residential Property Owners Protection Act, but regardless, this is an unnecessary cost to home builders, home buyers, and homeowners. It doesn't make neighborhoods look welcoming. Seems to oppose the comp plan, just like PH-24-028 did, but you are making homeownership more expensive in Colleen through ordinances such as this. The only positive is that if anyone is going to be forced into HOAs, the residents of those HOAs should not be required to pay drainage fees, since chapter twenty-six says they have to maintain their own drainage, and therefore they would essentially be being charged for a service they don't receive from the city. I will add that there is currently no requirement for fencing at all, again, in any residential area. So this is an unfair increased cost to new homeowners. If they wanted to go in later and tear down any masonry brick or whatever fence is required, the city can't do anything about it, because the city can't control or create the restrictive covenants for an HOA or their enforcement. In fact, the state has now put in new restrictions on HOA fines effective January 1, 2024. How do we guarantee our roads last five years that are designed by engineers? So we can't guarantee that a wall, just because it's designed by an engineer, is going to last. Let's leave well enough alone, and please just disapprove PH-24-027. A bunch of brick walls does not really make the city look inviting. It makes it cold and shut off. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. You have four minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. First of all, I want to thank the planning department staff for meeting with the stakeholders on this perimeter fence ordinance, and we had a good discussion. It lasted, I don't remember, at least an hour. It was at least an hour. It was a very good discussion. Of course, we did not agree on everything, but we do appreciate the things we did agree on. The staff and developers did agree that the perimeter wall can be built within six months of the infrastructure acceptance, or when the certificate of occupancy, the first one, is issued. We appreciate them working with us on, compromising with us on that. Now, we did discuss the collector arterial, but somehow what, one of the items that was brought up is there's no distinction between major and minor arterial and major and minor collector. All of them are included. There are such things as minor collector and minor arterial, and I'm not sure why that was left out of the presentation, but I think it should specify major, not, I think there is even residential collector. That's a pretty small road. Anyway, so hopefully that would be added, that would be specified instead of including everything. The concern of the developers is, of course, the much higher cost, according to them, of the masonry wall, and that would be added to each of the wall, I'm sorry, each of the lots, and it'll be passed down to the home buyer, which will make homes less affordable. And also, they, there is a discussion about maintenance of masonry walls also is very expensive. It's not maintenance-free. They will have to be maintained, and it would cost a lot more to maintain a masonry wall than a wooden fence. Also, when investors make decisions to, obviously subdivisions are huge investments, when they make a decision to invest, they look at the cost. This is an added cost to them, initial cost. Also, this is a little bit off-topic, I apologize, but it was sad to read in the paper this quote from the mayor, despite the presence of police officers, I do not feel safe.
Ma'am, that's your first warning. Get back on topic.
I understand. It's a disservice to the community to make such a statement. Thank you, ma'am.
Maybe we can get back to pronouns, Madam Mayor, right?
Mr. Price, stay on topic. That's your first one.
Right. You announced me as just Sean Price. That's informal.
That's your first warning.
So on this topic, Madam Mayor, with your disgusting face looking at me, right? Why do we care what the fence is? Why does it matter? You want to have communist societies, set up communist communities, all bordered in with eight-foot stone walls, like a prison cell, so you can cordon off people in little corrals? That's the ideology that you put forth? How about just let people choose on their own? Let them choose whatever the fence is. Be American. Have a choice. Be free to live in your house as you see fit, right? I mean, we all understand to be somewhat conforming, right? You don't want to put a clown tent in the backyard and say, hey, that's my house. I live in a clown tent. We got it, right? We need to have some kind of unity in there. But who cares if you can see in somebody's backyard? Why does it have to be an eight-foot stone wall? Why can't it just, you know, why can't it be wood? As long as you enforce the code like we should, right? If it's falling down, it's a danger to the public. Stone walls fall on people too, but when they do, they kill people. Stone walls need maintenance, every two years at least to be inspected. Engineered walls that just fit in with a small footing, like Mr. Alvarez has said, right? These fly off during high winds. They come apart. So there are a lot of different factors with all these things out there, but it shouldn't be that you don't get to have a choice. America is about choice. Communism is about you do what we tell you to. And this city council is more to the totalitarian, you do what we tell you to. I get it that you are primarily realtors up here, but that's, you know, come on now. Get back to being an American.
Get back on the subject.
I am on the subject, Madam Mayor.
You have one minute and fourteen seconds.
Okay. So, and I keep hearing all this stuff about, you know, it's good that we're going to table this, right? And look at it, and I had the, my representative showed me a fence, but they come out of date, just like the wallpaper that we got to spend one-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars for. These little stamped things out there, they don't stay that way for thirty-five years. They always update and get new. We're not thinking about that. It won't stay the same. And everybody's saying that this is a brick wall, it's going to stay the same, right? There are a lot of different types of engineered surfaces that they can put up, you know, faux walls, faux stone, you know, the foam stone, the foam concrete, all kinds of different things that could be utilized. How about we just make it an option for everybody and be free and be American? Thank you.
Public hearing is closed, and council stated this PH-24-027 was tabled. There is no vote that is needed. Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess there's a, let me just get to the point. I didn't get to mention this when we discussed it the last time. I do feel this is appropriate at some point for the City of Colleen, and it goes to look into the future. Aesthetics is important, and I voted to not table it, just because I'm pretty decisive and looking at the future. At some point, this would be on the conveyor belt for consideration and should be approved. That's all I got. Thank you.
Yes, sir, but we had another vote, and you voted in favor because of the date change.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just want to make sure you clarify that.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary.
PH-24040, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Boxuk Baldwin on behalf of True Foundation, excuse me, True Fountain LLC, case number Z-2419, to rezone approximately .3 acres out of Lot 2, Block 1, of the Bunny Trail Village replat, number one, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R2 Two-Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 3413 Abraham Drive, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately .3 acres of Lot 2, Block 1, of the Bunny Trail Village replat, number one, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R2 Two-Family Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Rebell just went through the slides. Would you like for him to go back through the slides? All right. Thank you. Public hearing is open. Mr. Baldwin. Oh, is that Mrs.? Mrs. Baldwin. I apologize. I apologize.
Hello, Mayor.
Would you pronounce your first name for the record, please?
Yeah, Boxuk Baldwin.
No, your first name.
A Boxuk.
Boxu?
Yeah, Boxuk.
Okay, Baldwin. Okay, I apologize for that. You have four minutes.
Wait, this is the, this is request we submitted, that the G, was the case, G-2419, and the area Bunny Trail Village, and we developed about almost two years ago, and we had the two actual lot, it would take it so long to make it plotted. So finally, we got plotted about a couple months ago, and the area, all that lots that built with the houses, and only we have two lot left here to finish out, and the area that Street Abraham Drive is mostly, is a duplex lot, and I have this two lot, we just plotted a couple months ago, we tried to do the same as the other lot, and this address, 3430, Abraham Drive, but this, this one, we tried the R1 to R2, which from and back over that property already R2, so I think it's, you know, good to make it the R, I mean, the R2 and the middle side of that portion of that land, and I try to finish out this project as soon as possible right now. So I just hoping, you know, we get the support for the R2. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing closed. Counsel, any comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve or disapprove PH-24-040? Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve.
Councilmember Board.
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. The motion carries four to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH-24041, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z-2422, to rezone parts of lots five through nine, Block 1, out of the Morris and Good Edition from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are locally addressed as 701, 703, 705, 707, and 709, East Avenue G, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately .8 acres, being part of lots five, six, seven, eight, and nine, Block 1, of the Morris and Good Edition from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Public hearing is, Mr. Rebell already went through the slides, so you want him to go back to it? Okay, public hearing is open. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Board, Adams again. What is your plea?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve 24041.
And Councilmember Board.
Second.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries four to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
Our, excuse me, PH-24042, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z-2423, to rezone lots two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, Block 2, out of the Morris and Good Edition from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District. The subject properties are locally addressed as 803, 805, 80... as 803, 805, 807, 903, 905, and 907 East Avenue G, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of lots 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, and 8, Block 2, of the Morris and Good addition from B5 Business District to R1 Single Family Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mr. Rebell went through the slides earlier. Would you like for him to go back through the slides? All right. Public hearing is open. Sean Price, you have four minutes.
I guess I'm not important enough to be Mr. Price, right? So basically, I think he already answered most of my question there, but I was just wondering that during the process that the city looks at the zoning, which I think that's an awesome thing, is to go back and review actual zoning practices. Because back in the day, they just did whatever, and now it's all serious, and everybody's getting involved with it. I understand that. I think this is a great project. But I'm at a loss at how we didn't force the guy in the middle since you're redoing all this, and it's business, and you're moving it from business to residential, right? So that guy can have a B5 business right in the middle of those homes. What does it do to the value of those homes? If nothing else is business around there, and if it's all business around there, and then you got homes, is this the mixed-business-home type of thing that we're looking at? Where you got the businesses underneath the house and everybody lives above the business? Because I know that's kind of a thing now, like the domain down in Austin. People were living in the homes above the stores and stuff. I don't know if this is the practice that we're trying to install here. So I'm a little confused with, you know, leaving the guy out because you force everybody else with the zoning practices to follow a long line, right? But here, we're making this exception. I'm just wondering what that, how individuals get these exceptions beyond the norm, right? Because it draws to question, right? Is there any butter in the process? Yeah, so that's just what I'm looking at, and that's how I see it. Thank you for your time.
Public hearing closed. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilmember Alvarez? Well, Councilmember Alvarez?
I move to approve as presented.
Councilmember Adams?
I second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Can I get a motion to adjourn for national night out? Okay, we got a motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Alvarez. All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Good meeting, Counsel.